Good evening, everyone. We are going to open up the meeting tonight, and we're going to begin with the workshop, a delayed workshop, and then we'll go into the meeting. Madam Secretary, can you call rule?
Thank you, Chair. Chair Fisher?
Here.
Vice Chair Harland?
Here.
Commissioner Rummen?
Here.
Commissioner Wojciech. Commissioner La Paglia. Let the record reflect, all members with the exceptions of Commissioner Wojciech and Commissioner Paglia are absent, with an excused absence.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The workshop item tonight is the Sixth Code Unit Code Updates Workshop, MCA 2023-00003, Ordinance Framework. Staff, may we have their report?
Thank you, Commission Chair. Tonight I'll be providing a workshop presentation on potential updates. Also, we'll be providing feedback from you as the decision body on these updates, and we can go back into any specific area for additional clarification. And let me get situated here. Sorry, this thing is not... Of course, this is not going... Can you advance the slide, please? Okay. Thank you. It's important to routinely bring forward these amendments in order to be consistent with new state laws and address new issues and unforeseen challenges that were not anticipated as part of the original code adoption. The last updates were provided under the Fifth Code Updates, which became effective May 5th, 2022. Try to bring this forward to the Commission for review about every 12 to 18 months or so. Next slide. First, I'll be providing some updates on the appeal process. At City Management's request, we have some inconsistent timelines with processing of appeals. We're proposing to place all this in one chapter, 2.28, and apply them citywide and identify any special differences there. Also, at Code Enforcement's request, we're looking at amending 1.2670, Appeal of an Admin Site, to reflect 30 days from the current period of 20 days. Next slide. Next, along these same lines, we're looking at some updates to nuisance abatements and unrelated final maps. At Code Enforcement's request, and the City Attorney's Office, we're looking at defining the responsible party, a violator, abatement by the city, assessment of cost incurred, noticing instructions to the tax collector, and things of that nature. For final maps, providing minor updates there to delegate approval authority to the city engineer from the City Council for the processing and recordation of final maps. Next, here, we're proposing some updates with gross floor, providing a gross floor area definition. We need this definition to help with project review and to, for review, under our objective design standards. Next slide. Next, we're proposing some minor updates with solid waste and recyclable material storage. There's an existing error under Table 3-1, under the 16 to 25 unit category. This only reflects 48 square feet. This is actually reflective of the tier below that, so we have more units here, so you're going to need more space. So what's been calculated by staff is a 96-square-foot threshold for this type of situation. Next slide. Next, Economic Development identified some issues with vehicle dealerships and updated criteria for storage with those dealerships. The long and short of it is, we need to have a broader definition than what is currently provided there. Next slide. Next, we're proposing some updates with the removal of an existing section that requires report of the Planning Commission actions to the council. The reason behind this is there's logistical issues, as identified by the City Clerk's Office here, in order to provide this type of report that is not presently provided. Staff notes that the Commission actions are still reported administratively, so there will be no loss in context on what occurred at a Planning Commission meeting to council such as tonight. Next, with telecommunication facilities, there's an existing minor discrepancy with lettering error there, and also incorporating innovation zone standards with these standards here. For construction noise, we're missing Saturdays with respect to this issue. It skips over that and has weekdays and Sundays and holidays, but Saturdays is missing there. Also, we have a discrepancy with 4.5 acres versus 5 acres for establishment of a residential wedding facility, so we'd be just looking at cleaning up that error there. Next. The next set of proposed updates concern indoor uses. At Code Enforcement's request, they're clarifying that all uses should be within a structure unless otherwise exempted for outdoor storage with screening methods. That's, so that's an area that we were going to be looking at. Next, please. For the next two updates, the first one being razor wire and the second's accessory structure. For razor wire, we're looking at potential prohibition of razor wire due to safety concerns and for aesthetics. There's other fencing materials and techniques that are available to ensure a similar level of safety and security. This is a common approach with other cities. For accessory structures, providing clear parameters for both detached structures, such as patio structures, poolrooms, and things of that nature, and attached structures, such as patio covers, to address some confusion on how the code applies. Next, please. Next, we'd be adding some use descriptions under slaughtering and rendering with some updated criteria consistent with state requirements, providing some definitions with those two areas. Next, please. The next set of updates concern parking. First, we'd be looking at an amendment that provides for parking for produce agricultural uses, such as quantities, locations, and things of that nature. Second, removal of the ER2 zone for an RV surface parking exception. Due to the smaller lot size, it was determined that the surface area should be paved, unlike a more roll lot. And third, adding a section concerned parking of temporary storage units. It's been expressed to staff that a 48-hour rule should include any units placed in the driveway or yard area, so we'll be looking at that. Next, please. The next two proposed updates, first concern home occupation permits, signs, and vehicles, and the second is a restaurant definition. First, for home occupation permits and vehicle signs, we're looking at the advertising to include vehicle signs as a limitation there. And second, we need to add a restaurant definition to the code by having this there. It'll help with project review when we're looking at those types of uses. Next, please. We're looking at updating the director's determination process. Currently, we have development plan permits, several different minor conditional use permits, and residential parcel maps, and kind of defining what those different items are, as far as what review process each of those would fall under. And secondly, we have some very minor notification updates that's been identified to us by Mira Fire and Rescue concerning hazardous storage and the fire code, so we'll be having some updates with that area. Next, please. And last, we're proposing some updates to sign our code lack specifics for exposed neon signs and LED signs around windows and those bands, so we'd be looking at that. And lastly, we have this weird code discrepancy where it describes a monument sign above a roof line, and monument signs are usually fixed to the ground, so we'll be looking at updating that item as well. The next steps with this process would be including returning to the Planning Commission with a draft ordinance introduction for recommendation to the Planning Commission, then to the City Council. After receiving recommendations, staff will present the ordinance to the council for consideration and approval later next year. Next, please. In closing, staff recommends the following: receive and file the staff report, provide direction on, to staff on potential updates. And to help facilitate this discussion, I'll be happy to go back to any of those items, as I kind of highlighted each item, and we can go into those in more detail. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Very well done. Looks like a lot of work to be done.
Yeah.
Is there any comments here from the DIAS to the staff?
Yes, I had a couple of questions here. I'm assuming the appeals period is just to give Code Enforcement a little bit more time in that, and I'm assuming it's a 30-day, it's a calendar, not a... 30 calendar days versus 30...
Yeah, it's just like calendar days.
Just a thought or suggestion, you might want to...
Clarify that.
Clarify that in the code, because that could come up at a later time. I just had some questions regarding the Planning Commission actions to council. Can you maybe elaborate a little bit more on that?
So currently, the code requires that a report be provided by the City Clerk's Office to the council on all the details from the prior meeting. My understanding, this is done administratively at the present time. There's logistical issues, I guess, for the City Clerk's Office to be able to provide that type of report, which has been expressed to me.
Right, so essentially, we changed our procedure, but we didn't change the code. So we, they get the information, they know what actions you take, but the code still requires a report that we no longer prepare. So this is a change that the City Clerk's requesting that we do.
Basically, clean up to eliminate a step in the process?
Yeah.
Okay. Make it easier.
Yeah, but the council will still get your actions and your recommendations. It's not, it doesn't, they're getting them more efficiently now than they were before.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that clarification. That makes sense. Maybe a little bit more detail just on the, you know, maybe what the underlying issue is for the RV storage? I know that's been a concern or a question for several years.
Right, so right now, we have an exception for the ER2 zone, which is a smaller lot size. It could be at 10,000 square feet, so you're talking about your track home communities, where right now, you can park on gravel on the side, and then this, I guess it's, it's created issues with water quality runoff and things like that, and more of those denser areas. So Code Enforcement's expressed to staff that this issue be addressed.
So is the thought, then, to require a concrete pad, then, even for the smaller lot sizes, opposed to parking on the dirt or...
Correct.
Okay.
Because you have more of the infrastructure there, you have storm drains, you have, so you can, we have our regional water quality permits and stuff like that, so we don't want that to negatively affect that.
Okay. And then, just lastly, just a, the restaurant issue, what's the...
We don't have a definition of a restaurant in our code right now.
It's odd, so Commissioner, it's, we define eating and drinking establishment in a few different parts of the code, but then, yeah, it's not, there's not a clear definition of what a restaurant really is. It's really odd. There's, we have bars defined, we have, the alcohol permits are defined, but the restaurant itself, we need a clear definition, so we're just adding that in for clarity.
Copy. And because of some of the, you know, some of the alcohol permits are based upon whether food is served or not served, that would provide some more clear definition.
Correct, yeah, it's definitely something that's, this is a staff-driven change, that we've noticed that we need a clear definition of what a restaurant is, because we already defined what bars are and nightclubs. There's a bunch of different types of definitions, I think, as you're aware, Commissioner Rummen. So, yeah, this is to help staff, just when we do those, especially the alcohol permits, that we know which alcohol permit goes with which type. Yep.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, thanks for that clarification. Appreciate it.
Vice Chair Harland?
I think your attention to detail is outstanding there. Just two things, razor wire. Is that widely used currently?
It's not widely used, although there's, you know, there's some safety issues when that's, you know, provided. There are other fencing materials that can be implemented to, you know, exactly, to provide that same level of security. So it's just something that we were approached with for, you know, a potential update.
I would add as well, there is old razor wire in the city that was permitted before we were a city, and so the city hadn't defined it as a fencing type, so we're looking at it sort of holistically, like, how do we deal with this? Because it hasn't been addressed in the code.
Makes sense. And just the home occupation permits and vehicles?
Yep, so having like those trailers where someone's, you know, having their business, you know, advertised in front of their home, you know, that's, we've gotten, I believe, concerns from neighbors and stuff with that type of activity in the past. It's kind of the background on that. We can go to more detail on, you know, the next introduction of this, too.
So part of this, Commissioner Harland, would be, we're not talking about like, someone who, let's say, you were a CPA and you have something that says, you know, Harland's, "I'll do your taxes on the side of your car." We're not talking about that. We're talking about people that put an actual sign on the back of like a trailer and then park it in front of their house. That's what we're talking about.
Okay. Well, well done on the details. Thank you.
Go to the wedding venues. Okay, now that I'm dizzy.
I'm sorry. Yeah, right now, we have a discrepancy. So one section of the code has a 4.5-acre requirement, the other one requires 5 acres, so we just want to clean this up so the two are consistent.
So which one is correct?
It's been expressed to me, the 5-acre amount is correct, and there was a prior, I think, there was a discussion, I guess, previously about net acres after, when you take out roads and things like that, so that's why the 4.5 acres landed elsewhere, but it should just be 5 gross acres, and then we'll leave it at that.
Okay. And Saturdays for operating hours for construction noise, are we not allowing it, or are we allowing it under this new potential update?
We are, let me go to that section here. So it says right now, "Operating or causing the operation of tools, equipment used in construction, drilling, repair, alteration, demolition work between weekday hours at 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM, or at any time on Sundays or holidays, so that the sound does not create a noise disturbance across a residential, commercial property line except for emergency work of public service utilities." So right now, we don't have anything for Saturdays. We have everything, it's...
Saturday's not defined in there.
It's not in there, yeah.
Yeah, that's not to say that people can't do construction on Saturdays. It's allowed under federal law and in the building code. It's just not clear in our code, so we're trying to align that.
And this is like overnight hours, it's like 8:00 PM and 7:00 on weekdays.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Wojciech? Do you have any comments? No? All right.
We have one public speaker, too, if we want to get the...
Yeah, I'm going to. Okay. Thank you up here, and thank you very much for your presentation, and I'll turn it over to any public comments regarding the workshop. Do we have any?
Yes, we have Alan Long.
Mr. Long? Welcome, sir.
Check, check. There we go. Make a commission. Here for three reasons. First, we're at the end of the year, and I just wanted to come down and thank you for your service to our community. It is very much appreciated. I've been down here and have spoken before you a couple times, and very nice to be heard, and the questions you have asked on behalf of the people that are speaking here is, doesn't go unnoticed. It's a thankless job up there. I've sat in those, that seat, and, but I'm sure the high pay makes up for that. Just for the audience, that was a sarcasm, they don't get paid anything at all to do, to sit up there and do this job. The second thing was, I wanted to commend you for these code updates that are occurring before you, you and staff. This has been an issue going back all the way to 2006, when I was on the Planning Commission. You got a tough job. You got council telling you to enforce the code, hold up the code. You got a room full of residents that say, "We don't like what's coming to our neighborhood," and you got a general plan that says one thing, and then a code that contradicts it, and the code itself in three different pages. It was back then that we started to make sure everything was consistent, and it started and stopped, started and stopped, so it's really refreshing. I think this is, they said, the sixth code update. That's tremendous, and I want to commend you and the staff for doing that. It's very, very much needed, so you can do your job appropriately. Now that I've buttered you up, the third one's the ask. I did notice at the very last minute that the wedding code was being looked at. I realized this is just a cleanup item, but owning a wedding venue that has experienced tremendous growth and success in a very short period of time, I called Jarrett and Chris, said, "Would this be the time to maybe look at that code from a venue owner's perspective that would like to continue to expand?" The code, the way it's written right now, it's very restrictive in some ways, appropriately so, and inappropriately so. And then it's lenient in other ways, and it's not a one-size-fits-all. The code's written for a 5-acre parcel, potentially. Sometimes that works if you're up against open space, but if you're 5 acres against track homes, we've seen that not work in the community. We're a 70-acre hilltop, both with horizontal and vertical ventilation. We have some ideas that we would like to present. Maybe there'll be a change, maybe there're not, maybe the code's just fine the way it is, but this would be the time to maybe look at that. If it's not, knowing that this is a cleanup item and not wanting to take staff, too much of staff's time, direct me on when would be an appropriate time to look at it. It seems like this would be it. So here, just to ask for direction, if appropriate, staff to take some time, maybe sit down, examine the code, and see what makes sense and what doesn't. It may just remain the same, but I appreciate it. Thank you again.
Do we have any other public comments?
Seeing none.
Seeing none? All right. I will then close this meeting unless there's any other questions from the DIAS.
That's helpful. Thank you, Commission, and we can move on to the regular meeting then.
Right. Okay.
Appreciate that.
All right. I'm going to call to order, and good evening. The December 13th, 2023, regular meeting of the Marietta Planning Commission is called to order. Would the Secretary please do roll call to determine a quorum?
Thank you, Chair. Chair Fisher?
Here.
Vice Chair Harland?
Here.
Commissioner Rummen?
Here.
Commissioner Wojciech?
Here.
Commissioner La Paglia? Let the record reflect, all members present, with the exception of Commissioner La Paglia.
Thank you, Ms. Secretary. And for the... Ready, begin?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I need to, there was a recommendation or file, do I have to say anything about that? Okay.
Okay, all right. All right. We'll now be moving on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Seeing none.
Seeing none? I call for a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Harland approved it, and it was seconded by Commissioner Veruven. We'll now be moving on. We have a motion and a second. Secretary, please do a roll call vote.
Chair Fisher?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harland?
Aye.
Commissioner Rummen?
Aye.
Commissioner Wojciech?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, 4-0.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. At this time, we will take public comments. Any person may address the Planning Commission on any subject pertaining to city business, which does not relate to any item on the agenda or the consent calendar. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the Planning Commission on any matter not listed on the agenda. Any speakers are limited to three minutes. Madam Secretary, do we have any non-agenda public comments?
Jim Stewart, did you want to speak on traffic, public hearing one or two? Seeing none. No speakers for the agenda.
All right, thank you, Madam Secretary. We are now moving on to the approval of the minutes portion of the agenda. Approval of the minutes of September 27th, 2023, and October 11th, 2023, regular Planning Commission meetings as presented. Madam Secretary, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on the approval of the minutes?
Seeing none.
I'm going to call for a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Vice Chair Harland approved, and... Mr. Wojciech, Commissioner Wojciech, seconded. We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, please do a roll call vote.
Commissioner, Chair Fisher?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harland?
Aye.
Commissioner Rummen?
Aye.
Commissioner Wojciech?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, 4-0.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let's move on to the public hearing. Public hearing, development plan permit 2022-2551, and tentative parcel map 2022-2549, TPM 38310, Gerson Ranch Residential Project. Are there any members of the Planning Commission that wish to abstain or recuse themselves from this item? Seeing none, we will move on to the staff presentation. Staff, may we have their report?
Tonight, we have Aaron Rintamaki, Associate Planner, with us, with the presentation.
Thank you for the introduction, and good evening, Chair Fisher, Vice Chair Harland, and distinguished members of the Planning Commission. Today, we will explore a property site outlined in red, located at 25190 Washington Avenue, in the southwestern portion of the city, near the downtown Marietta specific land and commercial corridor. The project site is generally bounded by Adams Avenue to the northeast, Washington Avenue to the southwest, Brett Lane to the southeast, and Ivy Street to the northwest. The proposal this evening is for the subdivision of this property and the construction of 107 single-family detached homes. The project site has a general plan land use designation of single-family residential. This allows single-family detached and attached housing at a density in the range of 1.1 to 10 dwelling units per acre. The project site is zoned single-family 2, which permits single-family subdivisions, including detached and single-family dwelling units, with shared walls at a density of 5.1 to 10 dwelling units per acre. This project would result in a density of 6.8 dwelling units per acre, which is within the density permitted under the single-family 2 zoning district of the project site, inconsistent with the general plan density. The project site has been zoned single-family 2 for more than two decades. So now that we've discussed the location, the general plan designation, and the zoning for the site, let's move on to the project proposal. So here we have a tentative parcel map proposing to subdivide 20.63 acres into two parcels that are numbered and three-lettered lots. Parcel 1, on the lower left-hand side, would be 3.49 acres, and parcel 2, which is just outside of parcel 1, would be 15.85 acres. Lot A would be 0.39 acres, lot B would be 0.44 acres, and lot C would be 0.46 acres. Lots A, B, and C would be for street dedication to the city for Washington. Lots A, B, and C would be for street dedication to the city for Washington Avenue and Adams Avenue. The existing single-family residents and associated structures in the southwestern portion of the project site, meaning parcel one, no development improvements would occur on parcel one. So all the activity that I'll be discussing this evening will occur on parcel two. So here is a development plan that proposes the construction of the 107 detached single-family residences and 78 attached junior accessory dwelling units, which I'll refer to as a JADU, all of which will be on parcel two. The project is designed as a cluster courtyard with four and six-plex detached units with garage access via private motor courts. The project proposes three residential plan types. The residents would include between three and four bedrooms, three bathrooms, and a two-car garage. The project landscape plan would feature landscaping along the perimeter and internal to the project site, including within the private yards of the homes, except for the private open space, and within common areas and parks and along the internal streets and walkways. The project exceeds the common open space and private open space requirements of the planned residential development standards. Shared open space areas include a park featuring shade structures, benches, and picnic tables, trash receptacles, bicycle parking, game courts, trails, gardens, fitness area, turf area, and a playground. Gerson Ranch will be conditioned to form a homeowners association as part of the project approval process. The homeowners association will maintain all common areas, the green belts, walkways, parks, and recreational areas, and streets within the project site. The architectural styles of the homes include Spanish Colonial, Santa Barbara, and Adobe Ranch. The design elements reflect these architectural styles by incorporating stucco walls, concrete S roof tiles, decorative shutters, canvas awnings, decorative end vents and corbels, decorative exterior lights, and metal sectional doors that are all consistent with the architectural styles that I described. The homes are designed to incorporate the look of the traditional design element described -- oh, I'm sorry, that was in the city's development code. The project would provide 90 more parking spaces than required for this type of planned residential development. Each residential unit would include attached two-car garages for 214 covered spaces. Additionally, there will be 136 driveway spaces, and 71 guest parking spaces would be provided. This exhibit is shown above to illustrate the street parking that'll be provided on site, and then I mentioned that they have the two-car garages, and they also have -- most of the lots have driveway parking. So as part of these application reviews, the city hosted a public workshop earlier this year on April 3rd to discuss the project in a community forum. Residents were noticed in advance and provided an overview of the project at the meeting. The meeting was an interactive discussion where residents asked questions and provided feedback to city staff on the project. Additionally, staff informed attendees of state law such as SB 35, requiring cities to streamline the review and approval of qualifying housing projects, and SB 330, streamlining the entitlement process by requiring cities to reduce the time and expense necessary to process permits for housing. The city is required by state law to bring housing projects forward for prompt consideration by decision-makers. This community meeting helped further facilitate discussion with the residents of Brett Lane, which abuts the southeastern end of the project site. So Brett Lane, pictured above, is an unimproved private street that provides access to four single-family homes and is maintained by the homeowners. The general plan, if Brett Lane were designated as a public road, would eventually be widened to at least 60 feet in width. As part of the initial review of the project and in coordination with the residents of the homes along Brett Lane, the city considered the possibility of Brett Lane becoming a public street as it's shown in the general plan and improving it to its ultimate width of 60 feet. This would have created an opportunity to further buffer the project from the homes along Brett Lane. After various meetings and communications, both written and oral, and between the existing residents and city staff, it was determined that Brett Lane would remain private and not improved. Residents also raised concerns about the existing speed limit on Adams Avenue, as they indicate that drivers use Adams Avenue as a bypass route during commuting times. The current posted speed limit of Adams Avenue in this vicinity is 45 miles per hour. The speed limits are posted based on requirements in the California Vehicle Code and the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which the city must follow for enforceable speed limits. Residents voiced concerns about the existing site distance for vehicles turning right or left from Brett Lane and onto Adams Avenue, and how the project's traffic could impact this existing issue, not only for Brett Lane, but for vehicles exiting the project entry drive proposed along Adams Avenue. The city, in response, the city has designed standards that preclude the construction of any unsafe roadway, circulation, or access design features. Design and construction of the proposed access and circulation improvements, including the proposed entry-drive intersections with Adams Avenue and Washington Avenue, would be required to adhere to the city's established standards. These design standards would ensure that hazards would not occur, and that the placement of the vehicular access and circulation improvements would not create a conflict for motorists, pedestrians, or bicyclists traveling within or around the project area. The existing site distance at Brett Lane onto Adams Avenue is not proposed to change due to the project. Residents along Brett Lane have raised concerns about the parking along the portion of Adams Avenue fronting the site. Parking is already prohibited in this area, along with existing no-parking signs. So staff have met and worked with the applicant to address these concerns and have developed a specific condition of approval to maintain the existing no-parking signs along Adams Avenue project frontage. Lastly, residents who live along Brett Lane expressed concerns with the proposed two-story height of the residences that would back up onto Brett Lane. Specifically, residents were concerned about privacy issues and the height amassing of the buildings from the view of their homes. As in the cross-section shown below, the proposed two-story residential buildings that would back up along Brett Lane would be almost the same height as the existing single-story homes that front Brett Lane. The proposed residential buildings are approximately eight feet below the grade level of Brett Lane, thereby reducing the visibility of the overall building height, amassing, and window view shed. Additionally, as the detail shows, a six-foot high wall is proposed along the entire Brett Lane project frontage. This would further decrease the appearance of a two-story residential building and provide privacy for existing residences of Brett Lane. So this slide just reminds us of what I spoke about earlier when we had the community meeting to discuss state laws, SB 35 and SB 330. The city is required by state law to bring housing projects forward for prompt consideration by decision-makers. So during public noticing, the city received two letters for this project. Staff provided these letters to the planning commission for their consideration this evening. The following conditions of approval are recommended to be added to the project, and I'll read each one. The fence and wall plan shall be revised to add additional side yard gates to accommodate emergency access. Second, the project shall submit an application for a phasing construction plan to ensure construction activities are consistent with the Development Code criteria. And third, the project shall install no-parking signs along the Adams Avenue project frontage. So in conclusion, it's staff's recommendation to consider and approve the notice of exemption and adopt the resolution approving Development Plan Permit 2022-2551 and Tentative Parcel Map 2022-2549, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibits A and B and the errata sheet. That concludes staff's presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Appreciate it. Very in-depth, and I'll turn it over now to our commissioners up here for any questions to staff, and we can start with Mr. Veruven.
Thank you, Aaron, for your presentation. A couple things, just to get the terminology right with the walls and the fences there. So are there going to be block walls on the north and south of the property and along the Adams and Washington?
The project perimeter will be -- will consist of a six-foot block wall, decorative block walls, split base, earth tone colored. So that will surround the entire project site. As we make our way inwards to the project, we will also see decorative block walls at the streets and at the turning points to the homes, and on the interiors, we will see final fencing.
Thank you. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, just to make sure. It says wall on here. Just wanted to make sure what the materials were, especially when it comes to the houses there on Brett Lane, as it backs up to those properties there as well, too, and the mobile home park on the north side of the project here. You mentioned the speed limit on Adams Avenue and existing at 45 miles an hour. Is there a plan, or would it be something that the city would entertain that after the development comes in, that maybe the amount of homes going in there, would another speed survey take place automatically as a result of this development to kind of relook at the speed?
This evening, we have staff member Brian Stevenson, our traffic engineer, and we'll have him come on up and help answer the question.
Good evening, commissioners, Commissioner Veruven. The answer is, we do plan on adding that to our next speed ordinance update. That speed survey is roughly, I believe, about 10 years old, and we have to update them now up to every -- or no later than every 14 years. We have another update planned to begin sometime this next year, so we will be looking at it with the next update.
Okay, thank you. And since I have you up here, I got a couple other traffic. So I see the lots A, B, and C are basically right-ofways reserved for the eventual widening of Adams Avenue, I take it. So with this project, is the street going to be widened, and are you going to have a left-turn pocket in the center median to, you know, for southbound Washington turning into this, as well as northbound Adams to turn into this?
I believe so. Let me get my exhibit. We prepared a work order a few years ago to install the no-parking limitations along the frontage of this project, basically from Brett Lane to, I believe, just north of Knight Lane or Knight Drive, and we had installed red curb along there years ago. Now, with this project, we're going to just change out the red curb for no-parking signs. It's much easier for maintenance and lasts longer. And we did also put in left-turn lanes along the road where we could fit them in within the roadway width. I believe this roadway is 44 feet wide curb-to-curb with a 66-foot right-ofway. So if we do have the room there to add a left-turn lane, and it doesn't cause any site distance issues, we can add that during the street improvement plans. The traffic analysis that was prepared did not show that one was required.
So you say if, and so that's where I'm going with this, is there a way to basically add this as a condition to have that feature added in there? Because as you drive southbound on Washington, of course, you have Washington Avenue is relatively flat right there, but as you're going south, but still just cars turning in southbound or northbound on Adams there, especially with the speed, the way it is at 45 miles an hour, just would seem if we're going to widen the street, we're going to put up the no-parking sign, so still restrict the parking there on Adams Avenue, it would seem the time to basically do it would be as part of this project to put those left-turn pockets in. Just my --
It appears as though we have the width along there to the north. There's certain distances you need for the taper length required to shift traffic from a through lane to a left-turn lane, and that's based on the design speed. So as long as we have that, and it appears that there's an unimproved parcel to the north of Knight Drive on the east side. It looks like it's roughly 150, 200 feet in length. That may cause a limitation to put in the left-turn lane, but we can fit one in there once that's widened. We may be able to fit it in now. I don't know yet. We have not had any design plans submitted to the city yet, but the project is conditioned to submit a signing and striping plan. If one fits, we can have that added to the project.
Okay, thank you. One other question, and I know it really, because these are the streets in this development, I take it are going to be private, they're HOA, so are they going to be privately maintained streets?
Yes, the streets will be privately maintained by the HOA, all the internal streets.
And do you know if they plan on putting any type of, initially, some traffic calming measures such as speed bumps or something like that as part of the project? I can imagine there's a temptation for cut-through traffic. I imagine if not dealt with now, then it would be up to the HOA at a later time to do it on their own, but I just was wondering if that was part of the scope of the project at this point in time.
So in consideration of their project design, they did lay out the streets how we are seeing them today, and that was a traffic calming measure, if you will, based on the curve of the street. It's not a straight street that would allow someone to easily look across and make their way through if they needed to. Could someone go from Washington to Adams, or Adams to Washington, to use it as a cut route? Then it is possible, but the design of the street was considered how we see it today so that it's not lucrative to view that as a cut-through route. And additionally, I only briefly mentioned it And additionally, I only briefly mentioned it, but the location of the site is near the downtown Washington business corridor, and the project site design itself is an asset to those who will live there, but also the surrounding communities, because people who currently don't have a safe method of getting to the downtown from Adams Avenue area or somewhat for Washington, they'll at least be able to access this project site, utilize the public street improvements that are being brought as a result of this, and be able to cross over to Washington Avenue in a pedestrian-friendly environment, and it's less than a block and a half away from the business corridor to eat and shop. So we've, the, the applicant and, and city staff felt like the design itself was good for traffic calming, but also for pedestrian circulation and connecting the community.
No, and I could see that, and that's some of the same reasons you just cited would, would be ideal for someone wanting to kind of maneuver for a cut-through on vehicle traffic, too. Thus the questions I had regarding the left-turn pockets and traffic calming inside there for those exact reasons that, you know, trying to maneuver and get downtown, especially as downtown continues to develop, right? And, you know, one of the things that this project doesn't have is gates, which typically on other similar communities may have those, and those were, were chosen not to be an option for this site. So I just asked those questions because trying to think of things that might come into the future, and I think part of our job is to kind of at least identify those and see if there's something that could be mitigated beforehand.
Absolutely.
And then the, the last question just kind of begs the question of Lot A, and even though that's, or Parcel 1, I should say, that is not incorporated into this project, but as you can kind of see on the map there that there's some parking spots, is it the thought or idea or plan to somehow incorporate the same type of development into that same, on that parcel as the one that we're looking at tonight? Or what could be the, the possibilities there? Because that's, I know it's a what-if type of question, but is there any plan in the, in the hopper for that parcel as well?
Sure. I think we can, so to answer your question, I think we can look back at the history of this site itself. So today, we're seeing the proposal that we're seeing today. Over the past years, this property has worked with different developers to come up with some sort of idea of how Esther might want to develop her site. Throughout years past, as she's worked with different people, she has always maintained this separation. She, the house would be carved out where it would stay as is, and Parcel 2 would be developed with some sort of housing consistent with the zone. So when we talk about what might be in the future, based on history, it is highly likely that Parcel 1 will stay as, as it is, a single-family residence on a large lot for quite some time.
Great, thank you. Mr. Chair, that's all the questions I have for now.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Chair, a comment and three questions. Not too long ago, we heard a vendor share with us that soliciting feedback with residents in other cities doesn't happen. So I just want to applaud city staff for the community involvement here, the residents and the applicant, everybody coming together. You know, you shared the community workshop you had, the letters and the notices to bring people together for, you know, for the common good here, so well done. One note that came across from, I believe it was Mrs. Sargeus, Wendy Sargeus, had a couple of concerns. If we could just maybe talk through those. I think in the staff report, I got the answers to it, but just to put it out there, she was requesting there'd be no changes made to the no parking signs where they are posted currently and the red curbing, and I think that stays, correct?
That is correct, and additionally, we added that errata sheet, which has the condition that further just clarifies it in black and white plain as day.
Got it. And then requesting a current and accurate traffic impact analysis, you know, Brian, it sounds like that's being looked at and worked on.
The applicant hired a traffic engineer that worked with the city in scoping the extent of the traffic study and the requirements of it. We agreed with their methodology. It's been prepared, and we don't believe that if any, if a revised traffic study was resubmitted to the city, that'll affect any of these study intersections.
Got it. You know, you have folks that are commuting to Riverside, Corona, commuting down to San Diego, and hopefully with some of the new development coming here, we'll see more jobs here in the, in the city and be able to eliminate some of that commuting, which I know would be nice. Thank you for that. And then the last one, just requesting the builder to follow through with a green belt between Brett Lane and the block wall of Gerson Ranch Development. I kind of sense reading that there is going to be something there, is there not? If you can just maybe talk to that one.
Sure. So early on in my presentation, I described Brett Lane itself, how it's a private street, possibility in the general plan how it could be a public street, but really, we want to listen to the residents who voiced their concerns and want it to be a private street. The project itself that we're seeing today was designed according to the standards of the Development Code. We didn't have any wave standards here, aren't any exceptions. This project meets the letter of the Development Code, of which we're, we have a single-family zone adjacent to a, another single-family zone. There is not a requirement in our Development Code to provide a green belt or buffer, if you will, between two single-family zones. So in terms of the project itself and what the city can review and advise and direct, there is no requirement to provide a green belt between two residential zones.
Got it. So the, so the project, as it currently sits, is consistent with plan and permitted land use and zoning designations?
That is correct.
Okay. So ahead, thank you very much.
Commissioner Wojcik?
Aaron, thank you for the presentation. Very good.
Thank you.
And I got to say, you know, I like the look of those condos. You know, it's a good look. Yeah, they have a little pop to them, too. The, if you can pull up the, the overhead of the, of the development plan, and when I look at that, can I tell from there where the ADUs are? Is it easy to decipher?
Not from here, but I do have a, a slide just for that.
Okay.
So here we are. Unfortunately, I don't have a mouse with me, but I can verbally describe where we're at. So let's start with the bottom of the page, where we enter the court, the motor court, yes, that area. So those two units right there, those will have the junior accessory dwelling units, and we can see the location of them because they have a separate entrance for each. You see the arrow there? That is the entrance for the junior accessory dwelling unit, which will consist of a small living space, a kitchenette, and a large storage closet and bathroom.
Okay. Is the intent, if, if I'm a resident of the ADU, that I'm going to be parking on the driveway or in the street or?
Excellent. So in this particular case, these first two that we're looking at here, I'm going to go back to the parking exhibit, it's important to see. So you can see that there is street parking provided on the one side of the street and along the sides of the street. Those are available for guests, or if you were to live in the ADU, you could park there. Now, I have, I have more to, to describe. So as we look at the motor court again, and we go to the end units, both of those. So you will also see on the, there's a driveway, and then there's the arrow to the main residence right next to the driveway, and then that is right there. And then just as we move towards the interior, that is the separate access for the junior accessory dwelling unit. So in this case, the home itself has the two parking spaces, and then there are two parking spaces outside of the garage available for parking. So someone renting the junior accessory dwelling unit could park there, they could have a resident or a guest parking there. There, there's a lot of options available for parking.
So if I'm looking at this diagram where we see the two triangles, I assume that's the garage? That's garage?
Yes. The dotted triangles are the garages, and each home has a two-car garage.
So we have 78 ADUs proposed, 71 guest parking spots, or something like that?
Around there, yes. We could, let's...
Roughly?
Yeah.
So in theory, I mean, because if I'm, if I'm a resident, I probably wouldn't allow my ADU resident to park on the driveway if I can't get in and out of my garage, because I'm going to have to tell them to move their car every time I want to get in and out. So in theory, though, the ADUs may occupy all 71 guest spots, if every resident did that.
Correct, in that scenario.
Yeah.
There could be scenarios where it's a family that's moving in, a parent...
Right.
That may not need a car or doesn't use it all the time. It could be a family...
Yeah, I'm not going to make my mom move her car. I get it.
It could be a, a family, their young child coming back from college, moving in. So in that case, you might have them parking there because you could more easily communicate and direct to them. So there are different scenarios, but certainly in the one that you described, that would be a possibility.
And to help, looking at this, Aaron, the first ones you described are the red ones, and then the second ones you described are the yellow ones.
Correct, thank you.
So those are the ones that have the, the ja du's. The orange ones do not.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right, I want to talk about Brett Lane real quick. So if I understand, I mean, this thing's been zoned multifamily since the mid-'90s.
Single-family, too.
Single-family, too. It's not, it shouldn't come as a shock to anybody, that was always a potential. Actually, that was a reality that, that some, that would go there at some point.
Yes, since the late '90s, yes.
Okay. And I could understand if I'm a resident, I'd be a little bit frustrated because also I have a big structure kind of towering down on my home. I get it, but it's kind of a buyer beware thing. It's, there was nothing, no surprise here.
Right.
It's always been zoned that way. And I, you said earlier, when Commissioner Harlan was asking me questions about whether or not anything, whether or not there's any requirement to soften that effect, and I think your answer was no, there's nothing out there that would do that. My question, though, is, was the owner at least presented with that issue, and if they presented any kind of proposal, what they could do to potentially soften that effect?
Thank you for the question. So that's a little tidbit of information that would be helpful. So in addition to the community meeting that we had, conversations, meetings here at the city, we also had the applicant himself reach out to the residents and set up their own meeting to have their own one-on-one discussions with each other outside of the city's review and requirements. And so they had a separate meeting and met. The city wasn't part of that, but we do know that there was discussion about the project and possibilities of different designs.
Okay. There was this discussion about making Brett Lane a public roadway 60-foot wide. Would that have pushed the project back at all, or would the structures be where they currently are irrespective of the width of the street?
Sure. So we investigated Brett Lane because in the general plan, it shows it being a public street. So had it been developed as a public street, it would have been pushed back further, at least 30 additional feet beyond what we're looking at today.
The actual structures?
Yes.
Okay. The, will you go to the development plan overview map? Yeah, that one, and I don't know if this is the best map to use. Can you walk through with me real quick the lighting within the project?
Sure.
Like, streetlights, or how, how far apart, or, you know, things like that?
I don't have the, okay. I'll need a minute to get the details on the lights.
Or whoever, yeah. Throw a light flying to whoever you need to.
I'm going to have to pull up some information here.
Hey, while you're looking at that, I, I have a, a traffic question. Maybe it's more of a statement, but I was looking at the traffic survey, and page 19 of the survey kind of had the current grades of, of the, of the particular intersections during peak hours for the morning and, and the evening, and then I think it was page 27, 6, 26, kind of has, I think it's an updated 2024 grading, and then the grades, assuming the project were in place. And, and it looks like, from my reading, the, the traffic won't be impacted that greatly? Looks like the grades are fairly staying the same? Is that reading correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And, and maybe this is a statement for staff and, or maybe even if you take it to the council. I don't know what it is with traffic lately, it's just driving me nuts. It could be because of the holidays, it could be because of the 15 construction. I, I work in Temecula, and I take Jefferson all the way into Mirada because the freeway's just impossible to get through. And, you know, when I get to Winchester and Jefferson, it's backed up all the way to Overland now, and so I'll go through four light sequences before I can get through that intersection. But then when I get to Jefferson and Mirada Hot Springs Road, I'm two or three backed up now, and it's just going to get worse. And I see these grades, and I think somebody should start really looking at this and saying, should we tolerate this? I don't know if we can, but I just, there's so much building going on, and it just seems like everything's getting backed up, and I know I'm speaking for every resident out there. It's just getting worse. I live off of Clinton Keith. Clinton Keith is a disaster nowadays, especially with the Costco and, and all the development, and, you know, that's great, but I can't pull out of my street onto Clinton Keith without sitting at my light now for about two or three minutes, especially in the morning for school. So I think somebody has to have a workshop to really revamp this, because it's just, it's going to get worse, and I'm afraid we're going to get like Temecula at a lot, on a lot of these intersections, and I'm trying to avoid that to the extent I can, but I hope the city will look at that. Anyway, the lighting.
Yes, absolutely. So we have internal private streets, and we have two frontages of public streets, Adams Avenue and Washington Avenue. So on the private streets on the interior of the site, we're going to have approximately 10 streetlights, and they'll be staggered at 250-foot intervals. And the private street light is 26 feet 6 inches tall. We'll also have one additional street light added onto Washington Avenue and Adams Avenue at the public street standard, which is just a tad higher than the private.
Will the one additional on Washington and Adams be enough with the increased traffic and what have you?
It, it meets the placement requirement that engineering has in place for safe street lighting on the roadways. So yes, it will.
Okay, and then do the condos have sconces on each unit as well?
Yes, each, each unit will have a decorative light according to the theme of the house.
Okay.
There's also going to be landscape ballards in the park, there's going to be landscape ballers in the alleyway courtyards, along with garage lighting.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron, for that. No further questions.
Thank you very much. I have several questions that I want to ask. What about the water sewer infrastructure in this area? Have we have any issues with the water and infrastructure of sewer issues in this development?
So the water district associated with this portion of the city, it is the Western Municipal Water District that provides water and sewer services to this area of the city. They have reviewed the project proposal, the homes coming. There is infrastructure fronting Adams Avenue and Washington for sewer and water. Western is able to provide them with the sewer and water connections that would be needed to service this site.
With this new development and that water and sewer infrastructure, will it reduce the water flow, any of the existing residents on Brett Lane? will it reduce the water flow, any of the existing residents on Brett Lane?
No, they, there will be eight-inch water lines connected to the existing eight-inch water lines along Adams and Washington. Both are of the same size, there won't be any difference in pressure, there won't be any change to the services that are provided by Western to the neighboring residents as a result of this project.
And where are the trash receptacles for this development? Where are they located on this map here?
So each home will have their own trash receptacles. They will be storing them either in the garage or on the side yard of the home and they'll be carrying them out to the street on trash day to place them.
On what street?
On the street frontage that the houses are located on. So, um.
Majority look like there would be Adams Avenue.
All, they, all the trash will go onto the private streets. So they'll leave, they'll walk down their motor court and they will place the trash along the private streets that we see.
Okay, so none of the trash receptacles will be on Adams Avenue or Washington Avenue?
There will be no trash receptacles on Washington or Adams Avenue. And there will be no trash pickup on those streets either.
I guess the residents are very concerned about the traffic on Adams Avenue. And we don't live there, so we really don't know all that there is in traffic and this traffic coming off the freeway to go through uh to Temecula or whatever. Um, how recent is the traffic study that's been done?
The traffic study was prepared, I have the date for you, and tw- June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two.
Do we think with all the development that's going on in this area, that twenty-twenty-two is sufficient? Or there's been a lot of changes since twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four, let's say, for this development? Should a new study be done?
The answer to that, I believe, is no, and the reason for that is because the traffic study for this project included the trips generated for this project as well as for twelve other projects, which were known, either approved projects in the city or pending approval with current applications at the city. So everything that was known at the time up until early twenty-twenty-two was analyzed within this study.
And yeah, just to add to that from staff's perspective, that's the baseline. So when the applicant submits the application, it's not a moving target. It's, they submit the application, that's the baseline, that's when we analyze. So it's not a moving target, we don't need to add more studies. You know, if the project takes three years to, to process, it takes three years to process. But they, that's what the new state laws get the applicant, is they get locked in with things the way it is when they submit.
If I could add one thing to that, too, we also require that the traffic study includes a two percent growth rate from the existing counts to the opening year of the development to capture any unknown development that's unknown at the time of the first application.
So, okay, so let's say this development doesn't get put in place till twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. There will be leeway for that traffic study?
The two percent growth that was added from the counts when they were performed in twenty-two, um, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two to opening year of twenty-twenty-four, so two years, so four percent growth was added to it to potentially capture anything that was unknown at the time.
Okay, regarding no parking signs, currently where are those no parking signs? Do we have a, a slide that shows that? And are they on both sides of the street or one side of the street? Because when I drive down Adams Avenue, it seems like they are on the east side and not the west side. Is there, is there no parking going to be on the west side and east side of this street?
We're, we're going to continue maintaining the current parking constrictions that are out there today, which is both sides of the road, as well as extend it a little bit to the north of the uh property.
And where does Hawthorne Street come in here?
To the south.
One of the suggestions was is that the no parking signs should go to Ho- uh Hawthorne Street.
Yeah, I think on that picture that, that you were just showing, it's just past where Patton was, yeah.
Yeah.
A little bit further down.
Okay, Hawthorne here. Okay, so do, do the no parking signs go all the way to that street or not?
For, the project's uh not going to be installing them all the way to Hawthorne. We'll, we're going to be installing them along the project frontage as well as it may be required that it needs to extend a little bit once we see the street improvement plan submitted to the city and they show us their sightlines from their driveway. In our standard drawings that the engineering department has, we have a requirement for the corner sight distance that needs to be met. So if there's any sight distance obstructions coming out of their site driveways, we will ex- extend it.
Okay, can you give me a Brett Lane, the slide for Brett Lane? Just so I get a little bit more, how? Brett Lane is gonna be a private road like it is currently, correct?
Correct.
Okay, how is this de- new development going to be separated on the other side of Brett Lane? Is there going to be shrubbery, a, a block wall? What kind of, of separation would this development have from the Brett Lane residents that are there currently, the four residents?
Absolutely. So looking at this slide, we have a view of both the existing residents, which, right there. So those are the homes along Brett Lane. And then if we look on the right-hand side of the exhibit, we will see the new homes that are being proposed today. And as we make our way left to the property line, when you ask if there's gonna be a separation, we can see that right at the property line, they're gonna leave open, but they're gonna move inward into their project site and place the six-foot block wall. So there will be a decorative barrier between the residences on Brett Lane and the new project site. It will be a decorative split-face block wall that's of tan color in, similar in keeping with all the other modern residential housing that we have in the city.
Um, one last question is privacy. I know the residents are concerned about privacy with this new development coming in, new lighting gonna be coming in and the ability of people in this residence, these new residents, looking over into their property or their homes. Uh, what is being done about that or what has been done about that in the development plan?
Absolutely. So we, we looked into this matter and this, again, this exhibit is gonna be helpful in answering um the question that was raised. So as we look at the existing site conditions, again, we can see on Brett Lane, uh, the existing gravel street and it's showing it with a little arrow and that would indicate that that's the existing grade of the site as we look at it today. As we go on the left-hand side of the exhibit where the new, or the right-hand side of the exhibit, where the new homes are going to be, we can see that the grade level for these homes and for the, the development overall and especially along Brett Lane, that's going to lie eight feet below where the homes are on Brett Lane. So while these homes are two-story, they're, they're going to sit eight feet below Brett Lane already. And so we have the eight-foot difference between where Brett Lane sits and where the new homes will be. And then we also have the addition of the six-foot decorative block wall that will be placed along Brett Lane, which is the higher portion of the property. So those things combined, the fact that the project site sits lower than Brett Lane and the addition of the six-foot wall along Brett Lane, those two combined are going to um minimize the view shed question.
Is eight feet the maximum that these can sit below the residents currently?
In terms of a grade, if they, I, I believe this is the um natural terrain of the topography. If they wanted to grade lower, uh, they could, there's probably an expense involved, but um.
But right now it's set at eight foot.
Yes, that, that's the project design and um it fits well in this case.
Aaron, thank you very much for answering all the questions from the commissioners up here. Appreciate it very much. Any other questions any of the commissioners have before we go move onward?
Yeah, I just have a, a couple based upon something, uh, Mr. Chair, that you brought up. So uh keeping this, the same photo up here. So with the grade difference right there, it would seem to me based on the design there, if I, if somebody's walking on the dirt road of Brett Lane, they're actually tall enough to actually look into the backyards of the homes uh of the development, correct? Looks like maybe only about two or three-foot wall is what you would see on the Brett Lane side.
Thank, thank you for the clarification, having said that. So let me re- restate this exhibit. Um, so like I said, the new project site sits eight feet below. Before that six-wall, six-foot wall block begins, there's a retaining wall of eight feet bringing them to the level of Brett Lane where it sits. On top of that wall will be a six-foot wall sitting on Brett Lane. So you would have to be mu- quite tall uh to be looking over the uh six-foot block wall.
So just for clarification for the audience there, so it's gonna be basically fourteen feet on one side and six foot what you would see on the other side?
Six foot on the exposed side.
On the exposed side, okay, just wanted to make sure uh for clarification. And the, the dirt road of Brett Lane, if it were fully extended, if it was gonna be deemed a um, a publicly maintained cul- uh cul-de-sac, and that was the option. It probably would have doubled the size of Brett wa- uh Lane as far as the width of the actual street goes and it would have been paved and everything like that, which would have pushed those houses a little bit further north in development and taken away uh what you see as maybe some of the backyard space and then some, right? But the option was by the residents there to maintain it as is, so the fence or the block wall really is somewhat close to the, uh, to the property line of the project, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Any other questions? Aaron, thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, well done as always. You're very diligent in what you do and we appreciate it.
It's an honor to present, thank you.
It's time now for the applicant to give his presentation. Is the applicant here and does he wanna give a presentation?
The applicant is here this evening and has prepared a presentation for you.
Okay, if you could state your name and representation of?
My name is Erica Gucci, I'm on here as the project developer representing the city of Mirada. And thank you Chair Fisher, Vice Chair Harlan, and fellow planning officials for the service of the community. And for allowing the opportunity to contribute. Grants before the city tonight. Uh, I'd also like to acknowledge and thank staff for their service to this community as well as their hard work um related to the application for this project. Aaron did a great job, um, he was comprehensive. I'll try to, I'll attempt to keep this brief. Uh, again, my name is Erica Gucci, the project developer. Next slide, please. I would also like to introduce Esther Gerson, who is not present tonight, but is nonetheless an integral member of this project team. Esther is the current property owner. Her deceased husband, Dr. Hyman Gerson, purchased the property in nineteen sixty-four. Dr. Gerson was born in New York in nineteen eleven, relocated to LA prior to World War Two. During World War Two, he served at March Air Force Base and eventually became the chief physician at LA County General Hospital. I, I apologize, I just like these little tidbits about the history of the project.
Can I just interrupt you one second? Uh, just to let you know that you are limited to a fifteen-minute timeframe. And Madam Secretary, should we put the timer on? Thank you.
I'll keep the history lesson short, Chair.
Alright.
So Esther had the opportunity to select many other developers to work with. Um, I like to think I was selected because of the project we proposed was most in alignment with her memories of the ranch house, also in alignment with providing her with the means to establish a legacy for her family. Next slide, please. So as Aaron mentioned, it's a hundred and seven single-family homes. Uh, we are going to be overparked beyond the zoning code. It's not gated. Um, I believe it's important not to gate this community to allow pedestrian access between Adams Avenue and Washington Avenue. We're providing a very healthy uh parkway for a meandering trail um through the property as well. And again, to emphasize, this is um all, will all be privately maintained, infrastructure, streets, uh, common area and uh, and basin. Uh, so it's no burden to the city. And again, it's a private, it's an HOA park, but that wouldn't preclude anyone from the public from utilizing the park. Uh, this is a, a highlight of the, or a zoom in of the motor, motor courts, which uh Aaron went through in, in good detail. I just wanna point out that this is an opportunity to provide, yeah, yes, correct, higher-density, single-family housing, but these, frankly, will be younger families, the opportunity to have their own private backyard. It's more of a rarity nowadays, given the way um, uh, housing is becoming in high demand uh throughout California. Next slide, please. Uh, conceptual sw- street scene, I just wanted to point out two things here. One, um, there are no garages loading onto the interior streets and there's only one alley or driveway access per, I guess, per two houses. Uh, I think that's a superior aesthetic design, um, especially relative to conventional housing uh where you have garage-dominated and drive, driveway-dominated streetscapes. This really is, I hate to use this word, but a new urbanist perspective on, on planning where we have a lot more of the architecture and the landscape being front-facing to the public and the uh, uh, and the pedestrians. Next slide, please. So just a brief overview of project benefits. Um, this project will contribute to the vitality of the downtown, you know, more people, more, more discretionary income, uh, more, more bagels, more, more coffee, more beers. Uh, fees and assessments, uh, briefly, twenty-five million in construction, as would be the investment here. An additional five million in city impact fees and other agency fees, school district, water district, and an additional fifty-eight million in assessed value to be taxed, um, uh, in property tax value. Uh, this is in a, what I would call an affordable by design um project, but that also happens to feature backyards and driveways. Now, it's not deed-restrict affordable, it's market-rate affordable because it's on smaller lots. It affords, because we're able to utilize the land with a higher-density, single-family product, we're allowed to afford those younger families with kids that need a ba- well, that, well, in these post-COVID days, need a backyard, the opportunity to purchase a, a home with a backyard for a more reasonable price. Uh, enhanced street scene, which I just mentioned earlier. And finally, respects the Mirada general plan and zoning code, which I'll go into uh detail further on. Uh, so additional project benefits or um uh concessions here, uh, please click, there's a couple animations. As we all discuss Brett Lane to remain a private street, uh, the historic, well, the Gerson farmhouse will be preserved, one more click, please, and continuation of the Gerson farm. Uh, so to your question, Commissioner uh Roman, will parcel one where the um house be, ever be developed? It certainly has the correct zoning, but the his- the history of that ranch house is, goes back to the eighteen hundreds, which is explicitly why we didn't, we're not impacting that, that house. Even those oak tree stands um that are existing there will not be touched because there is history behind those oak tree stands and it is a cultural resource to the, to the community. So it, the, for discussion at the diocese today, isn't whether that property is historic, but it is, i- i- if it were to come before this commission, again, it would almost, I would bet it would be deemed a, an important historic cultural resource to the community and, and should be preserved. Uh, in addition, pursuant to Esther's wishes, again, she will continue to u- utilize the house. Um, uh, my understanding from her is she is going to keep three to four heads of ca- head of cattle there um as just kind of a memory to her late husband in keeping it in, in, in continuity of the agricultural heritage of, of the area, which is directly tied to this um, to this house. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the junior ADUs, uh, I, this is a unique feature of, of this project and I wanted to, to dive into it a little deeper, cause I know it's a more, more newer concept pursuant to housing and state law and HCD and all, all that good stuff. So these are attached, effectively, they're bedroom downs, they're Effectively, they're bedroom downs, they're ground floor master bedroom units, but with a few enhancements, including, you know, pursuant to state code, they're required to have one bedroom, a separate little cooking kitchenette area and separate bathroom, at least a shared bathroom on the same floor and a shared exterior entrance. Whether 78 of them are rented out, I highly doubt. In our experience, 20% of them are, could be rented out to third parties. But most likely, they're used as a fourth bedroom, a master bedroom or an office. A couple other community benefits related to junior ADUs is explicitly, if it's a junior ADU, it can only be rented out if the unit's owner occupied, which discourages investors from coming in, buying units and stuffing a bunch of college students in there. Nowadays, the junior ADU rental income, potential rental income could be used by potential home buyers to qualify for a mortgage under Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. That's a recent policy change, given the higher interest rates. And most critically here, I think there's, the junior ADUs serve two critical demographics, not just to Myrietta, not to Riverside, but to California as a state. We have a population of talented young adults coming back from college and able to afford housing in California. The junior ADU allows them the opportunity to move back in with mom and dad, but remain in independent living and remain, the feeling of independent living, not living in that high school bedroom they grew up in, as well as, and continue to contribute to Myrietta or the county of Riverside. Secondarily, downsizing seniors. The opportunity for a widow or a widower to come live and live back with her young adult children allows the creation of a multi-generational household. That family will now have, hopefully have onsite childcare. And in addition, it'll free up housing stock within the region if that senior sells her house to hopefully another young family. Next slide, please. So just diving into it, that highlighted portion is the junior ADU. That's the first floor, the left is the second floor. As you can tell, it looks just like a bedroom down. Next slide. Diving into it, it's a junior, it's a separate entry bedroom, a little kitchenette with a fridge, probably a two burner stove and access to the, to a bathroom with a tub shower combination on the ground floor. Next slide, please. So my final point here is, that I'd like to make is that, as Aaron reiterated, the general plan designation for this property as well as the zoning has been the same for 20 years. It's, the general plan allows 1.1 to 10 dwelling units per acre. The zoning code is SF2, which allows us to utilize the planned residential development standards, which we are completely adhering to. So admittedly, I'm on my own planning commission, so I sympathize with the the heavy handedness of the rules coming down from the state. I know it's a difficult task for you to first interpret those state laws, but also present those to the public at large. But I did want to point out that pursuant to state law, utilizing SB 330 and the various tools available, density bonus law, that this project could have theoretically proposed a 159 unit project based upon its gross acres. We didn't do that, obviously. It wouldn't have been, first of all, it wouldn't have been the right, would it have been as marketable as we would hope? Potentially more profitable for a developer, but not as marketable. And it wasn't the right project for the community. I had to get Esther's blessing before I presented any application to the city. So this was, yes, it's not a traditional single family home community, but it's still single family homes and it again affords Esther the opportunity to provide a legacy for her family. Not to rub salt in the wound, but theoretically also, if this project did have affordable units on it, we could have, in theory, density bonused up to 80% of the underlying zoning. 287 units. Now, that's state law, that's density bonus law. Again, I'm on my own planning commission, we deal with this unfortunate reality of the state we live in right now. But that's, that is also afforded to the, to this project as well. In addition, if we provided the affordable housing, the parking requirements would have been substantially less onerous. 2.5 stalls per four bedroom unit. Our parking requirement would have been 275 roughly versus the 400 and some odd we're providing right now. Next slide, please. So this was a concept site plan provided by Esther and me from a previous developer. As Aaron alluded to, multiple parties have come before the city and proposed multiple projects. This is an example of one that's 8.6 units per acre. It's three, two story row townhomes and cluster product like the project I'm proposing. Obviously, we're not doing the townhomes, but that is the, that is the density that we're allowed to as a matter of right pursuant to the state. Again, not proposing that, but just wanted to provide an example of what's available in the set of tools for developers. So next slide, in summary. I think you have to click through these. We proposed, we're not maximizing the density. It's a market rate affordable project, in my opinion. Obviously, some people will defer with that, will disagree with that. Affordable by design, these cottages units and junior ADUs. Brett Lane will remain closed to through traffic and it preserves, it preserves those buildings that are possibly historic as well as continues the agricultural legacy of the project. That's the end of my presentation. I would like to address Brett Lane real quick. The separation between the proposed six foot wall, which will be the appearance of Brett Lane and the, that gravel street. Happy to provide Parkway and Greenway there, but therein lies the complexity of development because, one, who maintains that, right? I'm happy to provide a reasonable distance. I can't provide a specific distance because the engineering hasn't been worked out. There's always technical details that have to be considered, wall footings, soil conditions, in order specifically to determine what that space would be. I'm happy to maximize it for the benefit of the residents. But maintaining it is a different question because maintaining it, if we were to maintain it, it would require, which isn't a big deal for the HOA, but it would require access on that private road to maintain that landscaping. So that means loud landscaping trucks beeping, backing up at 6:00 AM in the morning, potential leaf blowers or whatever we're allowed to use nowadays and impact the lifestyle for those folks on Brett Lane. So I'm happy to reasonably consider enhanced landscaping and Parkway between the wall and Brett Lane. But knowing that it may not be feasible based upon those liability issues and those maintenance issues. So I'm around for any questions. Thank you again for your time and service. Much appreciated.
Thank you very much. You're within your timeframe. That's very good. Commissioners, do we have any questions? You will be allowed a 10 minute rebuttal after public comments if you request it.
Thank you. I would like to request.
Are there any questions for the applicant from the commission?
Just appreciate the collaboration, the history tidbits, the economic benefits. Your presentation was outstanding in the junior ADU slide. Much appreciated. So, thank you.
All right, seeing no further comments. Next, we'll move on to public testimony. The time right now is 7:25 and public testimony is opened. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments, starting with proponents, opponents, and then those neutral in that order? And the public comments are limited to three minutes.
Thank you, Chair. We have no proponents. Those in opposition, we have, starting with Jeff Sargeus.
Sargeus.
If you would please, when you come to the podium, state your name and if you're a resident of Myrietta or not?
Yes, sir. My name is Jeff Sargeus. I am a resident of Myrietta for nearly 35 years. I am the first house on Brett Lane. If you've traveled from Kahoots or the liquor store north towards Temecula and you've seen my giant flagpole or you've seen my pool in the backyard, that's my house. I sit the highest and it goes downhill from my house on Brett Lane. So I wanted to, first of all, thank you guys. You asked, you asked very good questions. It was obvious that you were, sent emails and sent some of the questions, so thank you. And I also like to thank the city and the developer, they have worked with us. They have met with us and they have been reasonable. I think out of a lot of the stuff that we've asked for, they've accommodated. So I really only have a couple of things to clarify. Let me give you a little quick history. Mike Madison is the second house in on Brett Lane. Mike Madison's oldest son is Brett. Hence Brett Lane. The road Brett Lane is our property. Technically, my neighbors drive across my property to go to their homes. The property line is the new wall. Absolute line is the new wall. Now, they did do a little setback on it, so there is some fudging on that. But that's the history of Brett Lane. It's not a street and in order for it to go through, it would have gone through a fifth house and exited on Washington. It was, it was us giving up our property, not just saying, go ahead and improve our road. Okay, clarity on that. Thank you. Adams Avenue where Brett Lane is, again, traveling north towards Temecula and traveling south into Myrietta. Brett Lane exits at the peak of a gradual hill. So thank you for looking. I want you to really pay attention to the parking. They've accommodated us on the no parking. When we exit that, it's dangerous. And we have to be head on a swivel because of the cars traveling in both directions. And I appreciate the adequate parking. The turnpockets, I don't think are going to happen. Brett Lane's already, or Adams is already established and the turnpockets are going to be very difficult. So that's going to bottleneck some cars as they go in. There is one turnpocket to the condo complex across. So, which is the one where all the cars are parked because they didn't obviously come and speak to you. So the one thing in addition to the setback, and I appreciate his flexibility with the setback. Sorry, I pointed back there. There you are. The setback would be appreciated, some sort of setback. And he brings up great questions on the improvement and who maintains it and all that stuff. I don't want a bunch of landscapers coming down my street either. So that's, that is a little bit of something that we could maybe work on. And then the traffic survey, that was done during COVID. What was the best thing about COVID? No traffic. I drive down to Escondido and when COVID was happening, it was, it was great. So I question the traffic survey and its validity. And anyways, I think I'm out of time, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have another speaker?
Next, we have Wendy Sargeus. She will be, Linda Everson will be donating three minutes of her time as well, so.
Just so that you're aware, when you make your comments, the commission cannot respond back to you at this point in time. So we're just opening up the public comments to hear from the community. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Sargeus and I live on Brett Lane. I have been involved with this project since the first notification that we received in March of 2023. We have written numerous letters and met with many city officials, city departments and Eric Higuchi about our main concerns of this project. We still have a few unresolved problems that have not been completely resolved and we believe should be considered before the planning commission approves this proposed development. Slide two. We live on Brett Lane where there are four one story rural homes, which are adjacent to this project on a private road off of Adams Avenue, which my husband just discussed is our property. And earlier, I know it was said that we didn't want a public road. Well, I don't know who would give up 30 feet wide of their property to allow a public road in their front yard. Our first concern is having a six foot block wall dividing the properties, which will be located directly in the front yards of Brett Lane residents. Just beyond the block wall, there will be two story homes looking down on our properties. On 8/25 of 2023, a meeting was held with the Brett Lane residents and Eric Higuchi. A discussion took place about setbacks, the block wall to allow for green belt with trees for privacy, to reduce light glare and noise restrictions for both developments. Mr. Higuchi's response seemed to be positive and welcoming as he even followed up with an email on 8/27 of 2023 expressing the following. "Applicants shall use commercially reasonable efforts to provide a wide area as commercially reasonable between assessor parcels 909, 190, 005, 004, 003, and 002 located on Brett Lane and the future block wall parallel to Brett Lane." And in addition, he also stated, "The applicant shall provide a license agreement or an easement to the property owners along Brett Lane. We are requesting the builder to follow through with a green belt between Brett Lane and the block wall of Gerson Ranch Development as the current plans do not reflect what was discussed." My second concern has been handled. As of this evening, I received a paper stating that the no parking signs that are currently located off of Adams Avenue will stay and there will not be limited parking as I was told a week ago before coming here. That has been revised and there, no parking signs will stay. My final concern has to do with the traffic report. With the traffic on Adams, which is a 45 mile an hour speed limit with no singles signals in the area, as many residents are aware, when commuting to San Diego, using Adams Avenue is a way to bypass signals and traffic in the mornings and later afternoons. Many commuters take Adams Avenue further down to Jefferson Avenue or to Cherry Street to Jefferson Avenue to avoid traffic on the freeways until reaching Temecula. Then they will enter the freeway. The traffic impact analysis report of 6/29 of 2022 for this project was conducted in March of 2022 with the city's general plan update from 2020 and has some problems. Of course, like my husband said, this was during the COVID, so I'm sure the numbers were not correct. The study area did not consider the commuting option that I just gave you of using Adams and going down Jefferson to enter the freeways on, in Temecula. Instead, the option was studied that showed the commuters going to the on-ramps located on California Oaks and Calamia, which Adams Avenue is not a through street to Calamia. And most commuters to San Diego would not be taking this route unless they are commuting to Riverside or another destination to the north. Currently having to exit Brett Lane during the commuting hours is very challenging as there is no room for error. There is no, there is one lane in each direction with a four way stop at Ivy and Adams. That separates cars just enough to make it almost impossible to merge into the traffic that's going 45 miles per hour. Another problem with the same report is the description of Adams Avenue, which states, "The roadway has a posted speed limit of 45 miles per hour with onsite parking provided in most sections within the study area." This is not accurate as there are no parking signs currently posted. These are two major problems in this report and should be considered as providing factual information. Another reason we are requesting the planning commission to not approve this project until a current and accurate traffic impact analysis is done, knowing that Mr. Higuchi is planning on selling these plans to another builder after approval. We definitely need to make sure there is transparency and the health and the safety of the residents are the first and foremost to be considered for the action. My last slide shows my three requests and like I said, I believe it's request number two has been met. But I hope you consider, our street is unique, it's rural, they're built in the 70s and 80s, one style ranch homes. In that area, it's agricultural and, which our house is. And in our front yard, like even though there's a private road that has always been a private road, we're going to have a block wall and the road goes downward. I'm curious if the block wall is going to be at the last house, Max and Linda's, if it's going to be six feet tall, because the houses are going to go up on the other side. They're not going to stay eight feet below. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And we did allow you five minutes on that time because somebody devoted their time. Do we have another speaker, please?
Yes, we have Mike Rennie.
If you could identify yourself and your address.
Yes, my name is Mike Rennie. I'm on the other end of Brett Lane in Washington, 25170 Washington. We've lived there for 35 years, so we weren't a buyer beware situation. I don't think any of us were, most of us weren't. It was never originally meant to have high-density homes. It was not the original plan. This is all part of California's nonsense that has come up. I personally have been a farmer here. I have a farming company since 1972 in this valley, and the changes that are happening in Old Town are catastrophic and very dangerous. The road that I live on, Washington Avenue, if any of you have been down it, I've been on better roads than Pakistan. This is a horrible road. It has these giant dips. People that come out of Manista Lane can't go on the far, they have to make, they have to go in oncoming traffic lane, because you can't see when you're coming out, you can't see out of my driveway, when you pull into my driveway. And it's the same further down on Washington. Now, we're talking about bringing 600, 500 to 600 cars, because I can tell you this, most people don't park in their garages. They keep a lot of material in their garages. With an ADU, you have maybe two people living in there with two cars, you have another two or three people with two or three cars. You could have five cars per home, which is 500 and some odd cars in this little tiny square. They're going to pull out on Washington, which, like I said, is deplorable conditions. What about the parking on Washington? I haven't heard much about no parking signs. I'm very worried about cars parking on Washington Avenue. That cannot happen. Cars cannot be parking on Washington Avenue. Washington should be open, and in the conditions of that road and the dangers on that road, never should there be parking on that road. So that needs to be addressed. I think, too, that the flowery and a little bit unrealistic presentation that Eric gave, I understand what he's doing, and he has cooperated with us. But it's a little bit too unrealistic. There needs to be conditions put on this project. We need to know exactly what it's going to have. This is a game changer. The home across the street from me was built in the 1800s, and the Gerson Ranch was built in the 1800s. This is a historical area, and we're going to really change this area if we're not careful. So the thing that I think is very important is that the road sides, both Washington and Adams, should have no parking at all. These people should be forced to park in where they're going to buy, buyer beware. If they're going to buy, they need to park in there. They don't want, I don't want them parking in front of my house, in the middle of the night slamming doors and so on, and whatever it might be. So this is something that is very dangerous, and I really hope that you guys consider the ramifications that this is going to bring to Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have another speaker?
Jim Stewart.
If you could identify yourself and your address, please.
Jim Stewart, 25076 Adams Avenue. We live directly across the street on Adams. What, I don't know if any of you guys realize, when they did, I think it's Meadow Lane, right across from Brett Lane, the condo complex, the homeowners had a lawsuit against the city, and one thing, part of that lawsuit, was they were supposed to provide a stoplight at Adams and Ivy, which never got done. So with all the landscape traffic and everything on Adams, me going out of my driveway, I have to go like almost halfway out in the street to try to turn one way or the other. A lot of times, I'll have to back up, because I can't see a car coming from Temecula. So if you add this many more cars with all the cars parked on the street, and no stoplight or nothing, basically, I can't even get out of my driveway a lot parts of the day. And with all the cars parked there, the landscape company, it's pretty dangerous to go up and down there, when they're loading and unloading in the morning and the afternoon. It's not that fun to drive around there. So I try to avoid it. So it's, now with all the condos going down behind cahoots and everything, it's going to be impossible for me to get out of my driveway. So the traffic concern is something that really needs to be looked at, and that stoplight, I think, should be put in before they even consider this, because it was supposed to be put in about, well, 20 years ago, whenever they put in Meadow Lane, and it never got done. So that's about all I got to say on it, just the traffic's going to be terrible. So, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much for your comments. Do we have another speaker?
Next, we have Elise Wisniewski.
If you could identify yourself and your address, please.
Good evening. Elise Wisniewski, and I am at 41895 Patton Place, which is a block, it's behind the Gerson Ranch open area. My concern is mainly environmental impact and the water that is notorious for our region. That land that they want to build on, to my knowledge, is already a low spot. It'd go into the creek. We're really, really low there. I know engineering has done their due diligence to assess the drainage, but I'm a project controls analyst for construction, so strict adherence to design, strict adherence to change control, and project analysis of the environmental impact is my main concern. It seems to me with an eight-foot drop right there at Brett Lane, where's the water going to go? It's going to erode Brett Lane. So that's what I would love to see this project assessed. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Do we have another speaker?
No further comments.
No further comments. I'm going to now, do we have the developer rebuttal? And do you have a 10-minute rebuttal?
I'm happy to address any comments the commission may have. I would like to say that I've worked on projects in multiple cities, multiple towns. The neighbors have been more civil, probably in that 1 percentile, being very civil people, and it's a testament to the folks in Marietta. That's all I have for now. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We're now going to close the public comments at 7:43. I guess we're going, it's now time to discuss, debate the matter that appears before the consensus, or debate ends.
Based on what we heard, is there ability, Mr. Chair, to ask additional questions of staff?
Legal?
Yeah, you can ask any clarifying questions, absolutely. We just don't want to introduce any new evidence, but...
A couple of things I heard, maybe the traffic on Washington, as far as we talked about the, or what was talked about, the no parking restrictions on Washington, was there any thought behind, I'm sorry, on Adams, was there any thought of doing the same on Washington? And then maybe, of course, in the design, we saw the open parcel there for, looks like a retention water collection right there to deal with some of the drainage concerns that was just brought up.
So in terms of no parking along Washington, Adams, when I looked into the matter, we first got the question, I pulled out the general plan and went to the street sections. So Adams Avenue and Washington Avenue allow street parking. And so, in this particular section of the city, Adams Avenue has no parking for some of the reasons that we just heard today. But Washington does not have any restrictions for no parking on today or as part of this proposal?
If I could add to that, we install red curb and no parking signs to meet site distance requirements, not because somebody doesn't want a certain vehicle parked on the street. And that's allowed for our general plan circulation element. Both Washington and Adams are collector streets that allow parking. The current restriction on Adams Avenue is there because there's a site distance issue with that crest vertical curve that I believe Mr. Sargis mentioned. On Washington Avenue, we don't currently have those parking restrictions. When the project submits their street improvement plans and improves the frontage of Washington there, we're going to be looking at the driveway approach to Washington Avenue. And if there's a site distance issue and our site distance standard is not met, we will install parking restrictions.
And are you familiar with the history that was brought up as far as any, was there ever any plan for stop signs or anything else that was mentioned at Brett Lane and Adams Avenue? I know that there's a stop sign just not too far to the north of it at Ivy. Was there any thought or discussion that was in the plan years ago?
I'm not aware of any other ones, and that was news to me about the traffic signal at Adams and Knight. I'm not aware of that lawsuit or requirement.
And maybe, if you could explain a little bit of the difference, I think a couple terms were brought up. I brought up a speed survey versus what's the overall traffic study, which seems to be more comprehensive of the city as a whole and some of the streets and thereof, versus what the speed limit is on Adams Avenue, what it is now and what it could be at a later time.
Yes, for the city to have enforceable speed limits on the public streets, we need to follow the requirements of the California Vehicle Code and the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So I think we have about 120 certified speed zones throughout the city, and that does not count any of the 25 mile an hour residence districts. We regularly update the speed ordinance about every two years, which encompasses roughly 30 of the zones that are about to expire or new streets, and we're constantly looking at it to make sure that we have appropriate speed limits that are enforceable by the city's police department. Hope that answered your question.
It does. Thank you. And then I guess the only other question outstanding would be maybe a little explanation on the green belt or retention pond there at the, would be the northwest portion of the property.
Yes, good evening, Commissioner Verman. So, everything right now drains from Brett Lane and Adams toward the basin. That's the natural flow, and it's going to continue to do the same, which is why they're supposed, the basin, which meets today's water quality requirements, and the lay of the land, the way it's proposed, will continue to simulate what's existing. So everything will flow in the same direction. So from a hydrology standpoint, everything's going to flow to the basin. From the basin, as you can see, there's pipes proposed, which will cross the road and outlet onto the existing open channel, if you will, that then drains into Marietta Creek. And also, if I may add, one of the residents made a comment about the wall and the drainage and erosion. So those details, although not seen today, when we are looking at plans, we always identify those details. So the way it will happen is because the water flows toward the wall, some drainage measures will be implemented. In the actual construction drawings, we'll get into the details, and we'll capture and route and allow the water to continue to flow, non-erosive, and continue on its path.
Thank you. And my last question, I know there was concerns brought up on both sides on Brett Lane, as far as, you know, whether or not, how big, if there could be an easement, how big access, maintenance, those type of things like that. If the project were to go forward, could those discussions as to what the ultimate, how that would look, could that continue with the, between the developer and the residents there on Brett Lane?
Yes, I wanted to clarify, they could continue between the developer and the residences outside of the city.
Yeah, point of clarification just from staff, that is outside the project, so it's really between the developer and the residents to square that away? It's really not. Our purview is part of the project. Once you cross the property line, it's outside the project. So that's something for them to work on themselves.
Right. It sounds like there's been discussions outside of that already, but that still could continue even if the property were, even if the development were to move forward and continue, correct?
Correct. And even Eric, the applicant, had stated, once they started to get into final design, they're willing to explore options with the residences. And Eric has met with them, has their contacts, so I would imagine that everyone would stay in contact and see if something could be done.
Great, thank you. I just had a couple, maybe after, any comments from my fellow commissioners had a question for the city attorney, maybe afterward. Okay?
Go ahead and ask it.
Okay. So with, could any conditions of approval, could they include maybe direction, you know, with staff to explore those left-turn pockets and traffic issues there as part of this project, accessible in and out of the project?
No, because the developer, these would be outside the project, outside the developer's control issues. When the, we don't even have a strapping design or a plan at all at this point, right?
No street improvement plans, which would include the signing and strapping plan for the project.
So when those come in, when those are submitted, they'll work with staff, and it's certainly reasonable for this commission to give staff direction and what they'd like to try to see come out of that. But, I mean, the devil's in the details and the engineering, and it's not something we can condition, other than put faith in our traffic engineer to implement the code and the desires of this commission to the extent that there is any discretion.
Or anything similarly, as far as maybe prioritizing some type of a speed survey that would come out at maybe the conclusion of the development of the property or something like that, or somehow, maybe not as a condition of approval, but it wouldn't be tied to this, but somehow, maybe that would be...
So likewise, this would be outside of the development and a condition for the development, but something that the city can certainly consider and follow up on, should it desire.
Right. And I would add that, you know, there's no, you know, Eric's a nice guy, but there's no guarantee that they're even going to start building right away. They might take a while, right? But the message has been heard by our traffic engineer, so I wouldn't want to put that on the project. That would be something that we already have heard loud and clear, and the city can move forward in our own way, regardless of whether the project gets built or not.
I know the major concerns here tend to be traffic and parking, and as we know, the state's taken a lot of our discretion out of our hands in that respect when it comes to housing. So unfortunately, our hands are tied on a lot of these issues.
Exactly. And I do appreciate, just as a comment, you know, we seemingly have a lot of apartment complexes coming online, right? It is nice to see more condominium projects or owner, you know, where it's owner-based properties coming forward with that. But some of the questions, just for the benefit of the people in the audience and the public that might be watching, as to what we as a city can do or what we can't do. Thank you.
Question, Harlan, any comments?
Sure. So I think to kind of tie into Mr. Verman, for the purposes of tonight, the criteria that we're asked to work within is, does this proposed residential development under the project, is it consistent with the general plan and the permitted land used in zoning designation? I think we agree that that...
That is correct, yes.
And subsequently, if we are to disapprove or condition the project, we would need a specific adverse impact upon public health or safety.
Yes, and it would have to be very specific.
Right. So for consideration for tonight, you know, we heard of a meeting on 8/25 that staff was not part of. Is it looking for staff direction? That is something that we don't, we consider basically tonight, your presentation, that conversation that happened on 8/25 is not part of our discussion? I guess what I wasn't asking for...
It is to the extent that you received public comment, and a commenter introduced her interpretation of that meeting into evidence, she did provide that.
Okay, yeah, just looking for some...
So you can consider that. In order to find a public health and safety finding, there would have to be some specific evidence in the record. evidence in the record that would meet that threshold.
And it sounds like that is an area outside of this development.
Well, furthermore, we've analyzed this project under 15183 under CEQA. That means that we've found it to be consistent with the general plan under your consideration, but we have not found any peculiar impacts of the project, which is a specific item that we'd have to introduce. But we've gone over this from the traffic to the stormwater, and we don't feel that there's anything that would be required post-hearing.
Okay, no, thank you. I mean, 90 to 100-plus parking spaces above, you know, what's required, park, picnic tables, game courts, trails, gardens, a lot of benefits here. Thank you.
Commissioner Roycheck, any comments?
I just, you know, everything I've heard tonight, it's consistent with the general plan. I don't see otherwise. I've heard comments about flipping the project. It's irrelevant for our purpose. It's not our purview. You know, traffic, the traffic report says it's fine. It's fine. We, you know, we don't override what that report says. I am concerned about the traffic, but that's just kind of generally, you know, concerned about it throughout the entire valley. But, you know, this report says it's appropriate and acceptable, so I don't see any reason why we wouldn't consider anything other than approving. But thank you for all the information we received tonight.
Thank you. I have a question for the developer.
Yes, sir.
Are you actually going to develop this project, or is it going to be sold to someone else? I heard a comment regarding that, and I'd like to get clarification.
Yeah, 100%. I will absolutely not be developing this project. These hands are soft. You don't want me touching a shovel and getting my hands dirty. The reality of real estate now is, there's two components to this business. One, you have the home builders, and then you have, quote unquote, the real estate developers. Home builders, stay with me here, aren't in the business of real estate. They're in the business of manufacturing and marketing homes. Because they're publicly traded companies, they don't take, and I apologize for giving the lesson here, feel free to cut me off whenever you want, they don't take the risk of entitlement or standing in front of these public hearings very often, because it is a large capital outlay and a big risk. So the market relies on individuals like myself, other companies, to either provide deals that are readily entitled, that have been, quote unquote, de-risked, so those home builders can come in and manufacture housing. I used to work for a home builder. The business of manufacturing housing is a very low margin, high risk business where they sell off their assets, right? I understand how multifamily works, because you have a cash flowing asset that has value for a long time. Home builders are in the business of selling off assets to individuals so they can achieve that dream of homeownership. It's a very difficult business, and it's a very tough business, especially in the state of California. So, long story, long answer short, no. To be very frank with you, I will not be developing this project. I will probably continue on as a project manager, specifically as a project manager for Esther Gerson. So she maintains, because there are a lot of promises I made to her as this project gets developed, including an eight-foot block wall around her property, her perimeter wall, as well as making sure her property is continually served by water and power during the development, as well as making sure her house isn't dusty, and I'll be there to, you know, with my, with the crew to keep it cleaned up. I will continue to be involved in the project, but I will not be developing it or building the houses.
So I guess a concern that I would have would be that all the discussions that have been between you and the homeowners and staff, those will all be, if you sell the project to someone, they'll all be in writing that that has to be done, correct?
The, for the conditions of approval are in writing. With respect to the commitment to Brett Lane, yes. That's, that is between, unfortunately, because of the way I think the subdivision map act works, you can't condition me to require improvements outside of the project. I think frankly, the green belt and the landscaping between the wall and Brett Lane are frankly project enhancements. But as I alluded to in my presentation or response, coordinating with five separate owners on obtaining an easement or license agreement is going to be very difficult, and an easement is effectively a taking of property, right? So I'm, we would be giving our property, but they'd also have to give us rights across their property, which is a difficult ask to make of any homeowner, in my opinion. So, but to staff's point, a lot of the devil is in the details with the final engineering. To be frank with you, with state law as it is, the entitlements are difficult. The engineering is even harder nowadays, because we have to accommodate the drainage, we have to accommodate, avoiding encroachment on people's properties, as well as, you know, the reality is, if the traffic engineer identifies a traffic, health, and safety issue, we have to address it during final engineering. Same with fire, life, and safety. So there are still a lot of hurdles for this project to get through to a building permit, a buildable building permit.
So you're representing Mrs. Gerson in this project, and Mrs. Gerson is aware of this project?
So, yes, she, I call her partner, I have an option to purchase a property from her upon entitlement and a final map recordation of the parcel map, but she is very, I've met with her many times on her property, and I'm in communication with her probably on a monthly basis.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
One last question to staff. Is there any thought process or consideration about this traffic light that was brought up today that was many years ago, and none of us really were here at the time? Is there anything that we would look at for that in this project development area?
So in terms of the project itself, there are no impacts associated with this project that would require a traffic light to be installed? In terms of past history, that is a matter that we could explore. The multifamily project that was referenced in the public comments that was built and finalized a long time ago, when the city finals a project, they check the conditions of approval, mitigation measures, and possibly an order from the court that could have occurred. And if that happened, then those things would need to be installed. If something was missed, that could be looked into, but it's not part of this project.
So the traffic light, in lieu of all the traffic that's going to be on this street, is really not in consideration or as part of the development of this project? Is that correct?
Yes, nothing we reviewed in terms of this project and the traffic that it brings would warrant a traffic light.
And we're in compliance with all of the zoning and agreements that are in place for us to make a vote on this?
Absolutely, this project is...
We're not in violation of any code?
No, I guess I'd like to expand upon your question. From staff's perspective, it is refreshing to be able to bring you a single-family project that does not require ignoring our development code standards, because they're adding density bonus and pursuing the state laws that we just talked about. In this case, they're building the project according to the density, in fact, lower than the density, and they have met all of the development code requirements that are applicable to a subdivision like this. So, you know, it was a challenge to get it here, but this is something that actually doesn't require any waivers and meets all of our rules.
Thank you, Aaron, for your information, I appreciate it. It's now time to call for a motion from the commission. Do I have a motion and a second? And if we could put up the...
I can read it for you. Recommendation? I can read it for you, Chair. If it stayed up. The recommendation is, number one, to consider and approve the notice of exemption for projects consistent with a community plan or zoning pursuant to the guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, Section 15183 of Title 14, Division 6, Chapter 3 of the California Code of Regulations, and the Public Resources Code, Section 21083.3. And that's an attachment in the staff report. And two, adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Marietta Adopting a CEQA Exemption, Approving Development Plan Permit 2022-2551, Intensive Parcel Map 2022-2549, TPM 38310, for the subdivision of 20.63 gross acres for the creation of two parcels. Parcel 1, 3.88 gross acres; parcel 2, 16.75 gross acres, to be developed with 107 detached single-family homes and related improvements for circulation, infrastructure, and common recreation area located at 25190 Washington Avenue, APN 909190001, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibits A and B."
Do we have a motion?
I'll move...
And, sorry, including the errata.
I was just gonna...
As discussed by staff.
Yeah, okay.
I'll move approval for the recommendation, just read it in the record.
I'll second.
That has been approved by Commissioner Wacheck, and it is second by Vice Chair Harlan. Madam Secretary, could we take a vote, please?
Chair Fisher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Harlan.
Aye.
Commissioner Vroman.
Aye.
Commissioner Roycheck.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, 4-0.
You want to say your state? Not till the end, we have another item. Want to just take a couple minutes, and then we'll do the next item.
All right. Okay. If you want to take a couple minutes, we'll recess for five minutes. We have another agenda item. Alliance Vista Marietta at Los Alamos Apartments. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, so we have...
Wait.
Sorry.
Wait. Sorry. Are there any members of the planning commission that wish to abstain or recuse themselves from this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair.
Now, staff, do we have a report?
Yes, sir, we do, Chair. This is Taylor Graebel, Associate Planner, with the presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight I'll be presenting on the development plan 2023-2786, Alliance Vista Marietta at Los Alamos Apartments. So the applicant has proposed a 120-unit project with a four-story building and a clubhouse, as well as a density bonus project. The project is located at the southeast corner of Vista Marietta and Los Alamos Road. It's highlighted as orange on the slide before you. Below, you'll find the bridges, Alamos Apartments, and the terraces to the south. To the west is Marietta Mesa High School, and to the east is Meadowridge Park. And Meadowridge Park actually has a pedestrian connection on the northern portion of Vista Marietta Road. So here is the image of the surrounding zoning. The subject site has a general plan designation of office and research park, a zoning designation of office, and it falls within the transit development-oriented overlay district, and I'll call that the TOD for short moving forward. The general plan describes the purpose of the TOD as a district with frequent public transit, taller buildings, a mix of commercial and residential, and a lot of people walking. Here's the image of the existing uses. The subject site is vacant. To the north is multifamily. To the east is a childcare center. To the south is a single-family residence, and to the west are vacant lots and single-family. The project includes a density bonus for the provision of 11 units that would be dedicated to low-income households. Three of those units would be efficiency or studio. Four would be one-bedroom. Four would be two-bedroom. As part of their density bonus, they're allowed for one concession and incentive, and they requested the waiver of a required five-foot landscape median at Sky Park Road access. As this is a density bonus project, it requires less parking. Code would typically require 206 spaces, while density bonus law would require only 144. The applicant proposes 150 spaces, six in excess of minimum requirements. Here's the project site plan. So a little bit about the process to this point. There have been four submittal cycles. For each submittal cycle, staff held internal development review and provided comments and corrections to the applicant. Review included fire, police, engineering, community services, landscaping, and planning. All parties recommend approval with conditions. The first floor will be a parking garage. This is something new to the city, so we provided special attention, and fire and police really looked at it to make sure it was safe for the residents and for our first responders. The applicant has proposed retaining walls, fences, and walls along Vista Marietta, Sky Park Road, and the western portion of the parking area, as well as the southern property line. You can see access is proposed from Sky Park Road, and Sky Park will be required to be improved to city standards. Pedestrian improvements are proposed and to be provided along Vista Marietta, Sky Park, and the Sky Park and Vista Marietta intersection. Interior pedestrian connections are marked with colored bricks for safety. There's an amenity area in the middle of the site with common open space in the top right-hand corner. Special consideration was provided for the southern property line that abuts a single-family residence to the south. A six-foot fence was provided with a 16-foot wide landscape and storm drain buffer. There will be trees that will provide 100% tree canopy at mature growth, and our noise impact analysis found that potential impacts do not exceed city standards. This slide shows the amenity area in the middle of the site. You'll see that they're proposing a pickleball court, a pool, a spa, and a clubhouse. Here is the community open space at the corner of Sky Park and Vista Marietta. There'll be a lawn area that has dining tables, seating, art, and bicycle racks. The area highlighted in orange, it's a table tennis shade structure, bench and sofa seating. And then a dog run is proposed along Sky Park, and that's highlighted in blue. Pedestrian improvements will be required as part of this project. You see highlighted in blue the intersection of Sky Park and Vista Marietta, where the applicant will be installing a crosswalk, stop signs, and accessible ramps. This is especially important because there's no crosswalk or ADA crossing from north to south on Vista Marietta. And if you remember, I mentioned, there's actually a park access on the northern portion of Vista Marietta. So not only will this provide safety and a way for access for those who are living on site, but the properties to the south as well. A raised landscape median will be provided, again, providing additional safety and beautifying the street for not only the residents but the community. Sky Park Road will be improved, and pedestrian clusters are going to be provided as part of the project. So that's that image in the middle. There will be two of those along Vista Marietta, and one's can get conditioned along Sky Park Road. Additionally, pedestrian scale lighting will be provided along Vista Marietta and Sky Park. This will be overhead lighting that's not quite as tall as a typical street light. The goal is to make it safer for pedestrians, to meet the goal of the TOD. Next, I'll cover the elevations over the couple slides following this. The project was brought prior to the adoption of the objective design standards, I'll refer to that as ODS, following. The applicant has proposed a modern style. This is a style that's permitted within the TOD, as found in the ODS. The applicant worked with staff to bring the design close to the ODS standards. As proposed, the design meets the multifamily and TOD standards. So you'll notice that the elevations provide asymmetrical facades with horizontal and vertical massings, changes in color and materials. And the first floor is marked with metal grills, changes in massing and colors. Here you could see a view from the corner of Sky Park and Vista Marietta, and the mural is an example that could potentially change down the line the actual painting itself. The mural would remain. So here are the elevations from Sky Park Road and from Los Alamos Road. And we could look at these later if it's helpful. And here are the elevations from Vista Marietta Road and from the south of the project. One thing I'd like to note about this bottom... One thing I'd like to note about this bottom elevation, it doesn't show the fence and the tree canopy that will be eventually provided as part of the project. So this is really what it would look like if you're standing on the property itself, not the view of someone south of the property. As previously mentioned, um, with the previous project, this project is subject to the Housing Accountability Act. Specific findings would be required to deny the project. Staff has recommended approving the project with the provided conditions. Staff recommends an infill exemption for the CEQA document. There are five requirements, each of which the project meets. Um, we have determined this with fourteen different studies. The project is consistent with the general plan and development code. It's within the city in less than five acres. There's, it has no value as habitat for endangered rare or threatened species. And we made sure of that with technical studies, including a biological resource assessment, burrowing owl study, and jurisdictional delineation. The project would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. With the improvements to Vista Marietta and Sky Park, the landscape median and all-way stop installed at the intersection Vista Marietta and Sky Park, we did determine the traffic impacts. A noise impact analysis was prepared, and it shows compliance with standards, as well as an air quality analysis and a water quality management plan. And lastly, the site can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services. The project site is subject to a private reimbursement agreement um, for previous improvements in Los Alamos Road on behalf of Marietta Four Ninety Two. If the applicant does not pay for the reimbursement, the city could be responsible for repayment. CO- sorry, COA Two Oh Six captured this agreement. After speaking with representatives from Marietta Four Ninety Two, there was a requested revision to the condition of approval to add additional uncertainty for repayment. A representative of Marietta Four Ninety Two is present and will speak later on the topic. Uh, the proposed revision is included in the provided handout. Staff recommends, um, the approval of an infill development project for- or, sorry. Staff, uh, recommends approval of the notice of exemption for infill development project, Class Thirty Two. And to adopt a resolution for the development of a hundred twenty unit multifamily building and related improvements based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A as found in Attachment One, as well as the provided errata. So if you have any questions, I could help address that. We also have our traffic, fire here to help with any questions you may have as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. I appreciate the presentation, and, uh, I'm going to now bring it up to the commissioners to ask any questions that they would like to ask. And we'll start with Commissioner Ver-
Thank you, Taylor, for the presentation. Uh, great job. Um, you mentioned a couple times regarding the six-foot fence. Uh, what, what type of material is that? Uh, different from a wall, so it's gonna be a fence there. What, uh, what are you thinking?
Sorry, that was a lot of slides there.
Uh-huh.
Yes, if you have any questions, there's other slides too. But this slide's really addressing, um, that southern property line. So again, we believe that it meets the standards of the development code, and the noise impact analysis found that the potential impacts fall within city standards. The buffering techniques include the fact that the building was placed as far as possible from the property line. So you'll see that was pushed all the way up against Sky Park, or, sorry, Vista Marietta. And actually, the first proposed site plan showed it flipped the opposite. But we had that concern for the neighbor, and then we also wanted to meet the purpose of the TOD, so we flipped around the building. Uh, the six-foot tall wall will be vinyl on the property, and image four in that bottom right-hand corner is an example. And also, as I noted, there's a sixteen-foot wide landscape buffer from the parking area to the wall. And then with the tree species that's selected, there'll be a near a hundred percent canopy screening at time of mature growth.
So when you say, um, the vinyl wall, and that's an example, do we have any preference or ability as far as, is it gonna be white? Is it gonna be, I like this color brown right here, some type of, uh, that would kinda go with the, uh, kinda the motif of the, of the project?
The color of the wall is something we worked with the applicant on. There's essentially standards that relate to neutral colors or matching the development. So that's what we er- wrote, that's what we landed at after working with the applicant.
So something other than white?
Yeah, it's proposed as beige in the landscape plans.
Um, and then also the parking. I couldn't really tell on the, on what we saw here and then also what was given to us prior to, as far as access to the, that's the slide right there. The ingress and egress there, I bring this up in every multifamily project, is gates. But based upon the, um, the parking on the first floor, there's, there's some type of security measure, um, either gates or something like that, um, in that, in the project there?
I think that'll be a good question for the applicant on how they plan to manage safety on their site.
Okay. And, um, the big question is, and thank, thank you for clarifying that the mural could be changed. I know it looks cute maybe in LA, San Diego, or some type of metropolitan, uh, larger city. But is there any ability for us to, I don't know, maybe get it, something toned down a little bit to, to where it looks, maybe something Marietta-based themed or something like that? Do we have any choice in the matter of what may go there as opposed to that?
I'll go ahead and jump in here.
Yeah.
Um, no.
Well, I'm just, I'm just using that as a request.
I know.
Uh, I know we can't, but-
It's not locked in, and we can, we can work with the applicant, like, uh, but we don't, we don't have the ability to pick and choose.
Well- Is it up to a developer whether to have a mural or not? Or does our in, our design standards that we adopted a few months ago, to where if somebody else, they, they put the plans in prior to we, us changing the design standards, right? But does, is this addressed and what we approved? Or do we need to be watchful and vigilant for something with our new standards so we don't have something like this?
I would say th- they are allowed. It's a design feature, and especially with a modern design, as this, this is a modern design. The, the mural is something that's incorporated into a modern design. So, um, it's certainly a feature that they can choose to do. And, and they'll, you know, they'll work with us on it. But yeah, we don't have the ability to, to tell them how we want it to look from here. That's not something that's in the commission's purview.
So is there a limitation on, what if they put a design on all sides, every wall? I mean, at what point in time does the design, oh, become the look of the project in its entirety versus a, just a portion of the, of the building?
I mean, as, as proposed, I believe it's, Taylor can clarify, but they've only got it in the one or two locations, I think. It's, it's sort of like a design feature to just create different visual interest on the side, that's it. It's not, not throughout the entire structure. That's not how it's envisioned. That's not what we, the way we have it in the ODS either. It's meant to be like a design feature in a certain part of a building. Similar to like, on commercial buildings too. We have some of our new commercial buildings, like the McKenna Building, or, or, um, like some of the office buildings that we're doing in the city. They'll have a design feature maybe on a corner or on a, to create some visual interest, but not across the entire side of a building. And that's not typically how we would see it either.
Typically, but does our, and I don't have the, the code in front of me, but I'm just wondering, is it limited to, uh, our new design standards? Cause I can't remember. Is it limited to a certain amount of square footage or a certain amount of portion of the project that, you know, where it doesn't become?
The whole thing?
Yes.
I, we have that discretion, I think, when we're reviewing projects, but yeah, not, not, uh, it wouldn't be a majority of a, a facade that would be a mural. No.
But is it limited in our code to where that-
There's not a specific limit, I don't think. If, if I recall, yeah, Taylor and I are shaking our heads.
I, I'm kinda wondering if maybe at some point we look at something like that.
Well, that would be something that's not on the agenda.
I know, I know, I'm just, I, I'm just bringing, because it's a topic right here.
Try to get consensus on, but- Point taken, Commissioner. Staff, staff can hear your individual concerns.
Right, right. Okay, that, that's all I have.
Vice Chair Harlan?
Nice job, Taylor. Um, on the density bonus project, you mentioned the, uh, the parking. So it calls for base parking would be two oh six, modified one forty-four. Good news on actual, we're coming in at one fifty. Is there, if there needed to be extra parking, is Vista Marietta and Sky Park options, is there? What area, I guess, in, in that section there would you deem that would be used?
I think one thing that is also helpful for this conversation is recognizing the TOD area. The intent is to have high density-
Right.
-which is required for like transit to be possible. Um, so that's why we have this minimum density of thirty dwelling units per acre. So if there was a area that were being designed for less car use and parking, this would be it in the city. Vista Marietta does not have parking on it on that, along the property frontage, and, um, maybe just this-
I can, I can add a little to that. This is a, um, it's using density bonus, so the state law actually, um, provides the baseline parking. Uh, jurisdiction can't ask for any more than that as described in state law, um, as, as that baseline. So they are me, actually are exceeding that threshold as identified here. So we, unfortunately, our hands are a little bit tied with that, um, because it is, um, a state requirement since they are exercising their use of a, a density bonus here to provide affordable housing.
Sure, no, I understand that. I was just looking at between Vista Marietta and Sky Park, if there was gonna be options for parking there as well if, if needed, right?
So there is parking on the northern side of Vista Marietta Road.
Okay.
And people do use that now. And then actually, I'm sorry, there is on the southern side of Vista Marietta Road, but it's past the intersection.
Okay. So at least there's an option if they needed it.
Correct.
Um, so design standard, modern, got that, it was, um, in before the design standards. What would, what would this design standard be if it fell within our design standard? And there's a big project further to the west that's being built? What's design standard is that one gonna be? Just kinda thinking how they're gonna line up to one another.
So this would be very close to the, um, modern architectural style. So as we discussed with the Objective Design Standards, based off of the number of stories and the zoning location, there's different design requirements. So this would fall under the modern architectural style, which is one of the styles that are permitted within the TOD.
Okay. Which, what's the style gonna be further west? Is that modern as well?
I think it's the Bridges project, I think it's Ranch. I mean, uh, Spanish, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Any, any public-
Little clarification on the, sorry, on the, I was just, uh, talking about that with the planner who processed it. Um, the, yeah, the Bridges has a mix. There's sort of some Spanish and sort of some Ranch style in there. And that's a much older project that was processed many years ago.
Okay, yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of work going on there. Any public feedback? Um, I know you've got the one house sitting right next to it. Is there any, any plans for, for that, or is, I guess, anybody, anybody from the public reach out?
There was, uh, no public feedback, but we did take special consideration for the house to the south of the project.
Okay, I was kinda squeezing. Okay, that's all I have, thank you, Taylor.
Commissioner Wojcik?
Taylor, great job. Real quick, on that fence and that house, can, can we require a block wall instead of the vinyl?
Yes.
Okay. There, I didn't see anything in the material about elevators. Are, is this facility serviced by elevators, and if so, how many?
Yeah, there's a elevator, if you could see, it's like, um, having a hard time describing it. It's in the, kind of the-
Yeah, I believe there's two. I pointed it out to the Commissioner.
Okay.
I, I said, how would he know that?
Right there.
Yeah.
Like squiggly lines. All right, so we have two elevators, uh, for the project, okay. The, can you go to the elevation picture? Uh, yeah. I, you know what, I know you can never deny projects based on looks, but this thing is just ugly, this project. I mean, am I the only one thinking that, or? Okay. I, I, we did a, a dog hotel a couple months ago that looked better than this. I mean, I'm just like, oh my gosh, maybe we should put murals on the entire thing so it distracts from the ugliness of it. I don't know. So this was, um, I guess submitted before our design standards. Is that, that, you said that, right?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just glad we have those design standards in now, cause my gosh, this thing. Oh, it's, I, I wish I could tell the residents we weren't responsible for this one, but my gosh, it's ugly. Okay, um, no further questions.
Hard to follow you.
Show me the location of this project again, looking at the street. You keep, my eyes keep flicking. I, I see this, is you have a different view of it, like the street and things like that, that you have been going through?
Can you go to the aerial, Taylor? Yeah, that one's good.
Okay. Now, where's the high school in relationship to this?
It would be to the west.
Okay. And Lincoln Avenue is the current one that has had construction over across the street. And there's a stoplight right there, correct?
Correct, there's construction going on right there, Chair.
Right, to widen that, and then there's- And then there's a stoplight right there at Vista Marietta and Los Alamos, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then Sky Park goes in behind that off of Vista Marietta.
Correct.
Okay. What is the, what is that in the middle there? Is that development in there? There, yes. What is that? That area there? That's a single-family home?
Yes, correct, Chair. That's the one single-family home that's adjacent to the project.
Whoa.
Right. And this is all located within the TOD, so that site also has a thirty dwelling unit per acre, ability to build thirty dwelling units per acre.
And then this brown area, tan area, is the other construction that's going on currently?
Correct, Chair, that's the Bridges project that's currently under, under construction.
And then the project that you're taking and giving us tonight is this little section with that little white thing in the middle there?
That's correct, Chair.
What is that little white thing?
It's, there's like a driveway access, and it's a paved space.
It's a driveway access onto that property?
Chair, there was a, you may recall there was a former land field, uh, field, uh, landing strip in the area. You're seeing remnants of the old facilities, like the buildings and the, uh, airport runway and the driveways. I think those are old remnants of, of yesteryear.
Of yesteryear, okay. Now, what about ingress and egress? How is this project going to look from an ingress, ingress, egress?
So one, uh, access point is provided along Sky Park Road.
Okay. What about off of Los Alamos? None?
From Los Alamos, there's about a twenty to thirty-foot grade change, and there's also a, a drainage area as well that won't be impacted as part of the project.
But there will be no ingress off of Los Alamos? Correct?
Correct.
Correct, Chair, and we, we wouldn't really want people to come and go off there, cause the light's right there. So you wanna push them off the light. That's correct.
Nothing off Vista Marietta?
No.
So there's only one point of- So there's only one point of ingress and egress for this project?
That's correct, Chair.
What about emergency vehicles? Where, how are they going to egress and ingress?
Chair, we have a staff from Marietta Fire and Rescue. It might be an opportunity for them to come up and be responsible.
Okay. If you could state your name, please? Okay?
When we looked at this project, our former fire marshal approved this, and it was determined that we can get an apparatus in and out of there. Some of the considerations that were brought up at the time was the concern of now electric vehicles and having a fire in that basement level. But they've done enough with their construction to preclude that fire from extending upwards. So it was approved, looked at, and the radiuses meet the needs. They moved some of their fire protection equipment out off of Sky Park Lane to accommodate and make sure that we had enough room. And then they also agreed to look at some of the trees over on Vista Marietta so that if we had our aerial apparatus, we could park the truck there and then swing the ladder over and pick people out of windows if that was necessary. So they, they meet all the requirements of the fire code, and it's approved as, as you see it.
Alright. And you say that was from a former fire?
Yes, it was former fire marshal Adrian Reinertson.
Okay, I didn't know she was no longer with us, okay. Requirements that you're looking for?
Yes, it does.
Fire and safety. What about water and sewer for this project going back to the city?
It falls under the Eastern Municipal Water District. The applicant has threaded previously with the district, and they could speak more on that.
Is there a retaining, a retention basis, basin on here?
There has been plans provided to, that maybe Casey Thompson could speak a little more on about the specifics, about how stormwater will be managed.
Okay. You could state your name and your position, please?
Good evening, Chair Fisher. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Casey Thompson, and I'm a civil engineering assistant with the City of Marietta.
Okay.
Currently, the water will flow, I guess it would be on the bottom side. And then it will flow into storage tanks underneath the drive, which will be held and then released within to the storm drain, going underneath the, the, the creek on the, on the left side there. There's a storm drain, a public storm drain going underneath there that'll connect to.
Okay. Alright. Thank you. You mentioned something about the city being accountable financially for this project? Did I get that right, or did I hear it wrong?
So there's a reimbursement agreement for supplemental Los Alamos Road Street improvements. So there was previous improvements that were provided within Los Alamos Street. And when someone comes to develop on the street, maybe Jared can cover this back.
Let me jump in, Chair. So what we have is, we have someone who implemented physical improvements in yesteryear. These are tied to specific assessor parcel numbers. As each of those projects would come to fruition, they are conditioned so that that applicant has to pay back the original group. We're happy to report that this applicant that's before you today will be paying that amount plus interest, and that's the condition language. The attorney representing the applicant wanted to make sure that the language was very specific. And so although you see an abbreviated version, the errata has the full text of that version, and we believe that's consistent with the history of that reimbursement agreement. But that's just a little bit of history. Someone ponied up some money, and they're getting that money back with some interest with each project that gets approved.
And just a little further clarity, so that if the applicant weren't to pay it, then the city is responsible, that's what it says. So that's, that's all Taylor was saying, is that's what the agreement says. But the applicant will be responsible, that's-
And that would be in writing?
It's a, it's in the agreement.
Legal document.
It is, these are unusual in Marietta, but they're common in other jurisdictions. It's, it's a statute, it's, there's state law that provides for it, and it's basically an old developer who built out some, some improvements and is now going to collect from the other properties that no longer have to make those improvements, they just contribute to it.
I see. And we are in agreement and no violation of codes for this project?
Correct, it meets the general plan policies and the development code as well.
And SEQA?
Correct, we recommend infill exemption through the 14 studies that we use to make that determination.
And if I could just add a little bit from staff, just to, this is a little different from the other one that you just, that you just saw. This site is a housing site. This is a site where we expect to get housing and in high density in, in the housing element, and affordable housing. And this project has all of those things. So this, this is a housing project that we want to see housing built on this site. And that's what we've said in our housing element as approved by the city council.
And how about lighting on this project? Where, is, we have sufficient lighting in here? And you mentioned something about a garage of some sort? Early on in your presentation.
On-site lighting will be provided with bollards, and then there are specific standards about minimum lighting at entrances and exits to buildings that we've worked on as well.
Okay.
They will also be responsible for providing lighting that complies with the Mount Polymar lighting standards. And then, as discussed, pedestrian lighting would be provided along Vista Marietta and Sky Park.
Okay. What about a parking garage you mentioned?
So the bottom floor of the project will be a parking garage with three floors on top of it of residential.
If you want to show the elevation, Taylor, it might help.
Is it subterranean?
It's the first floor. It's a, it's a podium style.
Podium style?
Can you click to the elevation?
What is a podium style? I'm, I'm lost here. I understand subterranean, what's a podium?
So it's essentially like, the first, the first floor is essentially like concrete parking structure is, is on grade first floor, and then they build the units above.
Okay.
So, so there's three floors of units above. The first floor is essentially like a parking structure.
I see. So this is a three-floor project, not a four-floor project?
It's four, it's four stories, three floors of units on top of one story of parking.
Okay. Thank you very much, thank you for your presentation, appreciated. Do we have a presentation? We've already done that. Do you have one question?
Yes, so Taylor, just a follow-up, right? So what Carl was saying, so this project's within the plan, within the zoning designation. Very detailed staff report, I read through it all. I didn't see any specific adverse impacts on health or safety. You agree?
Yes.
I'm good, thank you.
Go ahead.
I forgot to ask a question, I'm sorry. In the report, there was a, a comment about a waiver of architectural design features. And I forgot to ask what, what that waiver was for, what it waived.
A portion of it was the, the TOD standards for architecture has some pretty specifics within it. And because the first floor of the project is a parking garage, they provided like features in lieu of windows, like the grills and the changing and massing and the changes in colors. So there was, it kind of was addressing the fact that it's supposed to be almost like, the ground floor is almost supposed to be like a first floor. So they have slightly reduced architecture, but, yeah, we feel, or I felt with the grade change along Los Alamos and Vista Marietta, the provision of the landscaping, and then the provision of the landscaping improvements along Sky Park, and then the features in lieu of windows, that all of that combined to meet the, the standards of the TOD.
And they have the flexibility utilizing the density bonus program to, to ask for those incentives and concessions and waivers, and that's built in to our zoning code and state law. So they have that flexibility.
Yeah, and I note that was actually mentioned in the report that they had the right to waive those, so. And I appreciate that information. I just didn't know if there was anything that was waived that could actually make this project look nice. But it doesn't sound like it, so, but thank you.
Any more questions from the Commissioners to the staff? Is the applicant here and do they want to make a presentation? If you could state your name and company, I appreciate it, and welcome.
Good evening, Chair, Planning Commission. My name is Jim McMenamin with Alliance Development Services. We are the applicant, and on behalf of SWC Marietta-
LLC, the owner of the property and Alliance Development Services. I'm pleased to be here to present this proposed project to you. I want to thank you all for your service as planning commission members. And I would like to thank Taylor and all of the staff of Development Services, planning and engineering and public works and fire, for their help to bring this project before you.
Just to let you know, you have a 15-minute time limit for the presentation, and after public comments, you have a rebuttal of 10 minutes allowed to you.
Yes, sir. I will be grateful, I will be brief, and I will be seated as quickly as possible. First of all, just as a brief review, the site is 3.21 acres. If we could refer to the site plan, please, Taylor? Approximately 2.7 acres is actually usable because along Los Alamos Road, there's approximately a half acre of a slope area that's in a landscape and slope easement that belongs to the city. It's a drainage basin area along, parallel to Los Alamos Road. So you can see that blank space represented along Los Alamos Road there. And as to some of your comments, Chair Fisher, about the parking, I just wanted to try to clarify that for you. Access is taken off of Sky Park Drive, and the on-grade concrete parking structure is accessible in two places along, you can see on the left side of this exhibit, there's an entry there. And on the right side, you can see those two black arrows that go up into that roundabout drive area into the parking structure on your, to your right, up above there. Up, no, down to the, you can see the entrance that occurs at a right angle down here. If you go, enter, yeah, right there. And there are 144 parking spaces inside of that, excuse me, there are 44 parking spaces outside, and the balance of 106 of them are in the parking structure. Above, there are three stories of type 3A wood frame building, which is an additional fire protection measure. As for the availability letters from Eastern Municipal Water District, we have available, availability letters for both water and sewer. And EMWD has confirmed their ability to serve the site with water and sewer. As Taylor's excellent staff report sets forth, our project includes the provision of 11 low-income affordable units in accordance with state density bonus law and the Housing Accountability Act. And as also mentioned, we have a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act with respect to the infill provision in section 15332, I believe it is. So we've done our best to present a, a project that provides that affordable component as well as a, a podium style, which Alliance builds in other areas of San Diego, and Denelian has designed and built many of these. Denelian Associates is the architect on this property, and they're nationally known, and they're an excellent architectural firm. I am not responsible for the mural on the cover. That is only a representative example, and I, I don't think that it struck Commissioner Wojcik's preference there. So we will work with city on a mural more in keeping with the city's design standard objectives. I'm available to answer any other questions. And again, thank you very much for your, for your service and the city's review of our project.
Thank you, stay right there a second. Do we have any questions for the developer? Applicant?
I do, I think what Taylor had brought up, one of the questions I had would be more appropriate addressed to you. And it has to do with the security of the parking area. Either gates at the entrance, I don't see anything in the design there, or even on that first floor. And if I, correct me if I'm wrong, you said 44 outside parking spots and 106 inside? Was that, was that, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
So, so I, I, you know, just wondering how many of them might be, be secured? If you're, if you're going to have gates on the property at the entrance? Or at least on the inside ones, which?
We, we would have roll-ups on the, on the ones to, to the actual parking structures. But the, the entry, we do not anticipate gating that entry, as I recall. The, the entry off of Sky Park would be open, but the, the, the parking would be secured by the roll-ups on the parking structure.
Any reason why, why you chose that option?
I think we're mindful of the fire safety, and while fire would certainly have access with a Knox box on a security gate, we just didn't, we just didn't contemplate a gate on the, on the entrance to this. That we, we might reconsider that if, if that's something that police and fire would, would not have a problem with.
If you'd be open to it, obviously, we can't mandate it to that point, but it would, what happens is, is as development happens and, you know, car break-ins, car thefts, those type of things like that, we, the community have to, you know, long, long after the project is approved, you know, have to, you know, look at that. So that would be something that is near and dear to me personally. Thank you for your, I guess, reconsideration of the mural. I don't know, it could get better or it could get worse. But hopefully, it gets, it gets better. And then I'll reserve the, the block wall with Commissioner Wojcik who brought that up. Okay. That's all I have, thank you, sir.
Vice Chair Harlan?
Appreciate the, the additional opportunities. If this is all approved, for future residents to, you know, have some alternative housing choices, so.
Thank you.
Be a nice economic boost to the area, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wojcik?
Thank you. Yeah, the mural is, is an issue, but I, actually, my issue is even beyond the mural. I'm sure the architectural firm, they're great people, and you, you seem like a great guy. I just think it's ugly, I'm sorry, it's just an ugly building. Though that can't be a factor whether this is approved or not. So I want to talk, though, a little bit about this block wall. This homeowner, poor guy, I mean, he has an apartment complex that's going to be north and south of him. And so rather than a vinyl wall, do you have any opposition to putting in a block wall?
Well, if I may just say, the reason for the vinyl fence in this instance was, aside from a cost consideration, there's ultimately, I think- from a cost consideration, there's ultimately, I think, the possibility that this property in the middle, owned by Dr. Gu and Mrs. Gu, is zoned for, in the TOD, and is a, is a possible candidate for development out to a similar project, and there might be eventual cooperation on, on a permanent, more permanent wall, such as a masonry wall. I'm not going to argue about an additional condition to be imposed if this is a concern on the part of the Planning Commission, but that was the thought behind proposing the vinyl clad fence on the south side.
Okay. I, I mean, I would like to see that in there very much, just because of the impact it would have on that property owner. You're right, it may get developed eventually.
Yeah.
You know, when it does, take that developer out to dinner, and maybe you can get the half the cost of the wall paid for at that time. I don't know. All right. All right, thank you.
You mentioned that on the property itself, there will be X amount of parking, and then outside, there'll be amount of parking. Where are there going to be parking?
Parking, as you can see, that circular road that surrounds the rec center that's in the building in, in the middle there, and it's identified as Building D is the clubhouse. And you can see the parking spaces in that middle area of the horseshoe-shaped building, they're identified surrounding the oval-shaped road.
Okay, so, so there won't be parking?
No. Well, there is public parking allowed on a parallel parking basis in the parkway of Sky Park. Today, if you go out there, you can see there, there is a number of cars that are parking perpendicular to the, to the frontage line along Sky Park, and there's sort of a haphazard parking scenario going on out there. As many of the residents in the adjacent apartment community, Silverado, they're parking on the street rather than in their garages where they have probably accumulated other things than cars, and, and they have, they have additional cars rather than just the single car that, that garage would accommodate.
All right. Thank you very much, I appreciate, I appreciate your information and your presentation.
Thank you.
If I may, I have one more thing.
I'm sorry I didn't mention it, and that is simply that we are providing a, a pretty significant amount of development impact fees, TUMP fees, and MSHCP fees here in the neighborhood of $1,865,000 for this project. So I just wanted to say that this project is paying, beyond the fact that it is an affordable project with the CEQA exemption, it pays its fair share of development impact fees.
Sounds like it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Next, we're going to move to the public testimony, and I'm going to open up test, public testimony at 9:03 PM. I think, 9:03, is that what that clock says? 9:03. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments, starting with proponents, opponents, and then those that are neutral in that order?
Thank you, Chair. Proponents, we have Sarah Garbuzov.
Sarah, if you could identify yourself and where your residence or business is, please, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Sarah Garbuzov. I'm with the law firm Parks and Solar. Unfortunately, we're located in San Diego, not Marietta, but I represent Marietta 492 LP, and I just wanted to thank you for your time and for this meeting, and I just wanted to make a few clarifications for the record. First, it was stated that an attorney for the applicant was present. The applicant is Mr. Mc, Alliance Development Services, and Mr. McMenamin, I don't represent them. If Mr. McMenamin wants my services later, we can talk, but I represent Marietta 492 only. And in the slideshow, it said that the reimbursement agreement was dated December 21, 2001, but the correct date is December 21, 2010. I just, just wanted to make a note of that. And then as a way of background for the reimbursement agreement, back in 2010, Marietta 492 developed an apartment project located at 25100 Vista Marietta Road, and the city required Marietta 492 to overbuild certain public infrastructure subject to a reimbursement agreement. And under that reimbursement agreement, it required the city to collect reimbursement fees from certain benefited properties that benefited from that overbuilt infrastructure when those properties were developed, and then to pay those reimbursement fees to Marietta 492. The first of these benefited properties to pay was the Bridges Project. In fact, they paid earlier this year, and the Alliance Development Services is the next up to pay. And the principal amount due under the, due for the benefited property APN is $389,000. And the interest rate on that principal has been accruing since January 19 of 2010, and the total interest accrued is estimated at about $54,000, and that's based on the quarterly life rates. So a portion of that total estimate is based on the previous quarter's life rates, since the new ones haven't been posted yet, but that total is probably a pretty good estimate of what, what's total will be. And then lastly, the trigger for payment is the issuance of the first building permit. I know this is kind of nitpicky, but a building permit is something like a commercial building, a residence, or an apartment building, and not something more broad like a construction trailer. And that's all I have to say, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Do we have another speaker? Madam Chairman?
Yes, we have Ten Gu.
Okay, if you could identify yourself and your address, please, and welcome.
I am Dr. Ten Gu. I lived, my house, I lived right by the project, that is, house you, you all have seen. And I have comment for this. I think, in order to, to know the project, I counselman or commissioner should go there, take a look, how bad is the area? I'll tell you truth, apartment, Silverado apartment, all this car parked there dumped everything in front of my house. I'm right by the street, okay? So Sky Park turned into be a garbage collection, okay? So at one point, I want to bring this attention to all of you. And then I have, I have another point I want to bring up to you. I talked to the engineer before they submit the application. I brought up the issue. When the bridge project started, they tore everything apart in front of my, 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 my house. That's fine, because they were repaired, okay? Now, with this project, they came talk to me a few times, honestly, but I told them, I've been here 35 years. I moved here 30, there's no place I want to move to. There's no way I want.
Can you go with the microphone?
Okay. I've been to this town 35 years, and that house I lived 30 years. There's no place, I wa, I don't want to pay a house $700,000, $1 million for $2,500, $25 square footage house. So I said, I'm not going anywhere, okay? Now, the point why I want to bring you, your attention is, so when the bridge project coming toward part of the, front of my house.
Stay with the mic, stay with the microphone, if you could, please.
When the bridge project come in, they tore everything apart in front of my house, that's okay, they repaired. Now, this project come in, they promise, they say, oh, we give you $5,000, you fix your road. Okay, I did not agree, so they come in with a Bobcat, they tore everything up, okay? So they, so I have to fix it myself, and they have a paper here, I'll give you $5,000, you fix your, your driveway, okay? This is my complaint about their, this investor, okay? By the way, the land they bought, they bought it, I lost my land to previous investor because I trust them. I took their word, I signed a D, then they filed bankruptcy on me, okay?
You have 10 seconds.
So anyway, that's the beside point. My point to you is, this project, they talked to me a few times, okay? And they come in with the Bobcat, yanked my driveway, and then that, and then want me to fix it, my, my driveway. I think it's unfair. This is what the engineer department told me.
Okay, your time is up, sir.
Present it to the councilman.
Your time is up, sir.
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you.
And if you want the letter, they said $5,000, it's right here, if anybody interested. Because we want it $5,000.
Do we have any other comments?
Seeing none.
Seeing none? All right. I'm now going to close the public testimony.
Hold on, if you want to see if there's any rebuttal first.
No, I'm, yeah, that's exactly right. Any rebuttal? You have 10 minutes, if you'd like to rebuttal, anything?
Thank you, sir, I'll be brief. Jim McMenamin, I want to explain just briefly that Alliance Development Services is in escrow to purchase the property from SWC Marietta LLC, and that's why we are the applicant. I believe Dr. Gu is referring to a meeting that he had with our seller. During our escrow, we discovered that his original driveway location encroached onto the subject property, and it was my understanding that in cooperation with our seller, the driveway was moved off of our property and onto his property. So I'm, other than that, I'm, I would say that we certainly respect Dr. Gu's property ownership as, as our neighbor, and I actually had the occasion to work with Dr. Gu when I represented the other property known as the Bridges. I entitled the Bridges for a company called Zephyr, six, seven years ago now, and they subsequently sold it to Anton Devco, who's building that property right now. And we, as a course of construction of the widening and improvement of Sky Park, we replaced his driveway and a lot of his front yard improvements. So that's just background information on that. Again, we respect our neighbor, and we will provide the, the change in, in law material if that's what the commission deems, and I'm available for any further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We will now close public testimony at 9:13 PM. And we will bring it back up to the diocese for any discussion, or until there's a consensus. Any comments, questions?
I had additional clarification question for you, Taylor. I think when Mr. Wojcik asked about the block wall, is that something that, that could be conditioned? And I thought I heard you say, yes, it could be. Correct. Okay, so, and, and it sounds to me like, based upon what I heard Mr. Gu said, something to the effect, he's not going anywhere. So it seems like that the property, there's no future plans for evidence, kind of tied together, correct? The block wall is something you could request. Okay, so we could, as a commission, request that as a condition of approval if, if we had consensus on that.
And I would just clarify where you want the block wall, on that property line.
Well, I'd leave that up to, I mean, I.
Part of your motion. I would, I would clarify it in your motion, yeah, the south side of the property, yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah, I, I wasn't going to give a legal description. Okay, I got you.
Also, Commissioner, if you would prefer something like split face, something that's more aesthetically pleasing, I think we want specificity from the commission.
Oh, respectfully, punt that over to Commissioner Wojcik, since he's the one that brought that up. I, I feel like I owe it to you to kind of give that specificity to that condition if we had consensus to do so. Overall, I think it's a, I mean, considering the location, I'll just give my personal opinion, it looks like a great project there. I sincerely hope that you, developer, reconsider some, some gates or some other type of security measures there on the site, and maybe work with city staff, just on a personal note.
Vice Chair. Harlan.
I see the project within plan and the zoning designation, no specific adverse impact or health or safety, so if we want to condition, you guys want to condition a, a block wall on the side?
Commissioner Wojcik?
You want to make that motion and designate, I guess, what the, what it looks like?
Yeah, but he's not calling for a motion yet, but I, I will, when, when it comes to that, but I, I agree with Commissioner Harlan in your statements, it falls within, ugly or not. So my vote, I apologize to the city, the residents of the city, but it falls within it. Nothing further.
Personally, I'm not in, in favor of the block wall, so we don't have a total consensus on the diocese, but again, if you want to make that part of the motion, that's fine. You can do it. I don't have any other questions for the, for the staff, and just did a good job. It's time to call for a motion. Are you going to read the motion, or do you want one of our commissioners to read it?
I can read it. Recommendation is to consider and approve the notice of exemption for infill development projects Class 32 pursuant to California Code of Regulations Title 14, Division 6, Chapter 3, Section 15332, the guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act CEQA, and the attachment in the staff report, and to adopt a resolution, entitled Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Marietta Adopting a CEQA Exemption Approving Development Plan Permit 2023-2786 for the Development of 120-Unit Multiple-Family Building and Related Improvements for Circulation, Infrastructure, and Common Recreation Area Located at the Southeast Corner of Los Alamos Road and Vista Marietta Road, APN 949-170037, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A, has found in Attachment 1, and including the errata to Condition 206 as discussed in the presentation and the staff report, and.
So you want me to make the motion and do my, and, okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion based on the reading of the recommendation with the proviso that, as a condition of approval, that staff will work with the developer to require a block wall to be installed along the south, southern border of the property, up to the entire length of the property line between the developer's property and Dr. Gu's property, consistent with design standards.
Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second.
And Madam Secretary, can we do a roll call for a vote?
Chair Fisher.
I have a legal question.
Shoot.
Can I approve the project, but not the condition?
No, the motion is what the motion is. You can make an alternate motion to approve the project as recommended with the errata, and, and then that, we, see if you've got a second for that or not. That would be the procedure to do it.
Vice Chair Harlan.
Aye.
Commissioner Rummen.
Is it, I, he had a second motion on the, okay, he didn't.
He did not make a second motion.
Okay, got it.
He voted yes on the.
Then, then I.
Commissioner Wojcik.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, 4-0.
Thank you very much. City planner comments?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say happy holidays to the commission. It's been a great year. We've done a lot this year. This will be our last meeting of, of 2023, and I just really want to thank all of you. It's been fun working with all of you this year and looking forward to some. It's been fun working with all of you this year and looking forward to some, some more projects next year, but happy holidays, enjoy some time with your families and appreciate all the work we've done together this year. And with that, I'd also say that the planning commission has rendered a decision on two projects. The projects are appealable. You can approach staff at the counter or the city planner if you're interested in filing an appeal on these projects. Thank you. Back to you, Chair.
City attorney comments?
None, but happy holidays, everyone.
And planning commission comments?
I just wanted to, I brought up the, the one thing about this mural and is there something amongst my colleagues if we should ask staff to kind of look into this, something that we could bring to council that maybe, not the looks of it, but maybe a certain revision of the code as far as how much of the, the side or the square footage?
Would you like to ask staff to look at the objective design standards and to see if there's any way we can address in an objective way?
Right.
Sizes and shapes and, and amounts of murals? That's something you can request of, for a future meeting.
Very eloquently stated. Thank you, yes.
Yeah, received, received by staff. We understand. Taylor and I are the leads still on them, on the objective standards, so we will look at that and we are considering some additional tweaks to the document since it's just implemented and we still have the consultants under contract, so we might look at something. So understood, we've, we've heard your, your request.
And question again for the city attorney, this has come up several times and kind of as I look at security, parking security and things like that and, and either the requirement of gates or something like that, would, is something like that, if the city were to do that, would that be in conflict with the state law if we wanted to look at that as a requirement in the code for multi-family housing projects?
I think only if it rendered the project infeasible in some way, but there's a lot more that goes into the gate than just the gate. There's the traffic, there's the police and fire and, and a lot of other things. So if that, if that gate somehow would inhibit other, the ability to develop the project fully, then, I mean, it's something that again, could be looked at, but it's not a strict prohibition, but it's more complicated than just putting a gate up.
Yeah, I understand. I, I see, I've seen in my year here, I've seen several projects with them, some without. In my experience here with the city, I've seen apartment complexes that have decided to retroactively go back and have gates for security purposes and things like that. I would be interested on a personal level to hear a perspective from police and fire. I can just say from a practical standpoint, when it comes to crime statistics and things like that, the city is very proud of their low crime statistics and.
Well, since we can't discuss it because we're not agendized now, you could ask for staff to bring, you know, a small workshop back with relevant staff members to discuss the topic of gates and you can have a conversation about gates on an agendized meeting with the entire council.
And, and that's why I'm asking, and that's something that I would like to see.
And then if you find that there's a direction you want to go, then that could eventually turn into a recommendation to the council.
Correct.
Correct.
Mr. Harlan?
Wish everyone a safe and blessed holiday season and we'll do it all again in 24, right? Merry Christmas.
Mr. Wojcik?
I would echo those comments and in, in addition to the gates, I would love to do a workshop just on this traffic issue and what the city's allowed and not allowed to do and, and things of that nature. I'm, I'm probably asking for something bad because it's probably going to tell me we're handcuffed in fourteen different ways.
I would, I would point you to the traffic commission, which the, the city's traffic engineer knows about. That's really the place for the discussion on the traffic in general in the city. Traffic related to projects that we consider is here, but traffic in the city as a whole is something for the traffic commission, for sure.
The difference is what the city does versus what we require an applicant to do or what, on a particular development, so.
So, I guess to clarify, there is a venue to talk about traffic and for the public too. It's the traffic commission and they meet monthly. So you, you're welcome to attend the traffic commission, talk to the traffic commission, let them know what your concerns are, whether you're on the commission or a member of the public or anybody in the city.
That it? All right. I just want to wish everybody a, a great holiday season. I know we will not have a meeting on the 27th. Our next meeting will be in 2024. And with no further business, may I ask the consensus to adjourn the meeting? Everybody agree?
Yeah.
Meeting adjourned.
Heck yeah.
Happy holiday.